I'd like to call to order the Board of Education heading for May 5th, 2016. Present is Mr. Mark Patton, Ms. Donna Carnell, Ms. Jessica Gerber, myself Philip Dwyer, Mr. Anthony Calabrese, Ms. Tricia Pittco, Mrs. Jennifer Max McNally, and Mr. John Llewellyn. I believe we do expect Eileen Lou McCormick.
She's on her way.
And she's on her way. If I could have you stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
We have a busy agenda. There are a couple of items that I'm hoping will go fairly quickly, including the roof replacement project and the first reading of the policies, because the policies will actually be voted out at a future meeting, so that we can make sure that we get through the agenda. The most important item on the agenda is listed number three, and that is recognition of the fine work that is done here in this school district. So I will turn this portion of the agenda over to Dr. Tidal.
Hi, so I'd like to invite Mary Lou Carlson to come up to be recognized. She's an art teacher at Fairfield Ward High School. Michelle Hermsen is our core boarder, and also Mr. Edwin, the headmaster at Ward. And Michelle will tell us a little bit about the Ward. And Mary Lou, say a few words, we'll photo up, and we'll be good to go.
Hello, everyone. I'm Michelle Hermsen, the Art Department Coordinator of the Fairfield Public Schools. This is Mary Lou Carlson, art teacher at Fairfield Ward High School. Mary Lou has been a longtime teacher in our district. We're very proud to announce that this year she is the Connecticut Art Educator of the Year, something that we should all be very proud of. And I just made a little something that I'd like to read to you. On behalf of the Art Department, we are proud of our colleague, Mary Lou Carlson, in honor to her fact that she was a part of Fairfield's family for the majority of her career. Mary Lou started teaching in 1966, and when I thought to myself, she's been teaching for 40 years, I said to myself, well, I'm not part of the Art Department. Obviously, because it's actually 50 years ago that I was new, very proud of her. Her continued effort and commitment to division arts and to Fairfield students, and Mary Lou has spent her time district of favor by making this all look really good. Mary Lou, thank you for having me to share your work for arts, passing on your talent to the world arts, not only at Fairfield Public Schools, but in other communities that you have touched. Mary Lou, thank you for being an example of an example art teacher. After your colleagues come as a member, what example is required to reach that status? It makes a success of my show. By showing that I am always present at the Connecticut Art Teacher Hall, by the Connecticut Art Education Association, and making a thank the award is very personal to receive the award.
I'd like to thank the Board of Education and the administrative staff here at Fairfield for giving me the privilege of providing opportunities for teaching art to the students here for all these years. And I was quite surprised and humbled to receive the Outstanding Art Educator Award from the Connecticut Art Education Association. The CAEA became an invaluable resource for me when I first started teaching back in the 1960s. I've served as treasurer, newsletter editor, and exhibit designer. And CAEA provides forums for networking and sharing ideas for art educators from around the state and nation about national standards, curriculum design, media techniques, and most important of all, ways of engaging students so they can discover ways of expressing their inner selves and connecting with their environment through the enjoyment of art-making. My colleagues and I have helped to celebrate the artwork of our Fairfield students in regional exhibits such as Youth Art Celebration and Connecticut Scholastic Art Awards, which are sponsored by CAEA. And as has been said before, it takes a village to support and raise our children to be responsive and contributing members of society. It is important that our Fairfield educators continue to have the professional resources they need to improve their knowledge and support each other in designing and delivering dynamic classroom programs. The Fairfield Public Schools has been a constant partner for me on this journey of lifelong learning to figure out ways to help kids find their creative voice. There's nothing better than to see the enthusiasm of a child when that light bulb goes on inside, that feeling that you made a connection, and they are on their way to self-discovery and expression. Thank you very much for your recognition this evening.
Thank you.
Okay. Right here? Okay.
So we are on to student reports. Why don't we do Ward first, rather than have them always be the second school to report? So Ashley Gray, please bring us up to date.
All righty. So since the last time I met, a lot has happened at Ward, particularly, I'm going to start off with April vacation. During that time, we've had two school trips internationally. We had the charter trip, of which included both juniors and seniors from around our school. Both students from Ludlow and Ward went, as well as a trip to both Paris and London. On April 26th, we had no school as the primaries were held at Ward. There were, however, some study sessions for AP exams, which are occurring this week and next week. I personally took my two exams, both on Monday and Tuesday, and I am very drained. We've had our girls' lacrosse game against Ludlow. We won. We're going to have a baseball game at Harbor Yard, which I'm actually looking forward to Dr. Tidal announcing. Recently, I had a mock draw during our lunch periods, and it went very well. Our students are getting very accustomed to where they're supposed to be and how they're supposed to be behaving, so it's going very well. I have a lot of confidence in our student body. We completed career and technical education training. There was a student group recently with the superintendent search firm. We have the sporadic a little night music this weekend. And coming up on our 14th is junior prom. So I'm hearing a lot of news and prom posels circulating, and it's really nice to see people are getting very enthusiastic about it.
Any questions for Representative Fairfield Ward High School? Thank you very much. You know, we had a tradition going here.
Stop.
From Fairfield Ludlow, there's Fran Go.
So last weekend was the West Side Story Production, and the three performances were forwarded and two outside. And it was amazing, it turned out. Finally, they actually saw people that they were sitting in the aisles, and saying how they were completely so low, so congratulations are there. Last week was our AP Friday Show, so all the seniors got their AP, got to showcase their work before sitting in for their AP exam. And the AP students also to display their drawings as well. Next Thursday is our Fairfield Arts and Science Night Fashion Show, and the fashion show displays the clear there about all grade levels that participate in fashion. And the photo students actually get to take pictures, and the cookie students make appetizers, so it's a great event, a lot of students get involved. And like Ashley, it started, AP test day has started. And it's going to go on until next week, but teachers did a lot of prep, especially for the outside, little packets, review after school, and it's been very helpful.
Thank you. Any questions for our student at Fairfield Ludlow High School? Thank you very much. You can go ahead and ask for the IP tests, or get ready for them. It is now time for public comment. Any member of the public that wishes to come forward and talk on an agenda item, that is a presentation? If you wish to talk about a voter item, which is the approval of the Fairfield Ward Middle School roof replacement, Mary would talk at the time that item comes up. Anybody wish to go forward to talk on any agenda item? Seeing none, thank you very much. Presentations. Oh, I'm sorry, didn't see you. Go ahead forward.
Yes.
Please state your address.
My name is Vessi Dulles, and I live at 896 Mill Plain Road.
Thank you.
Yes. So I'm here to discuss the math textbooks for the elementary schools. The first comment I would like to make is in regards to communication. Just a couple of days ago, I've learned that the textbooks are being considered for change. And this morning, I went to the central office to look at the textbooks, and I was really disappointed to find out that the textbooks were not there, and they were not available for review. So basically, the point I would like to make is that in the future, whether it's going to be possible for the school administration to reach out to the parents in a more timely manner, because by speaking to Mr. Cummins and Mr. Wakeman, understood that the process started back in December, and the parents just learned, I personally learned just a few days ago, that the textbooks are being considered for change. So that's number one. The second thing that was communicated to me is that the decision has already been made. So in that case, what's the point of the public comment at this stage in the process if the decision has already been made? He told me that there's like a big committee of 35 members, involving the teachers and the administration, and they already have made a recommendation. He said it's nice that the public would like to make a comment, but it's a done deal. The second question, actually, it's a comment that I would like to make, is I wanted to find out whether this time the textbooks are going to be available to the students and the parents to take home. I remember sitting at this room about two or three years ago, at a similar type of meeting, and at the time, we're discussing Turk, and let's see what was the other book we're considering. I never saw those textbooks. They never came home. So are we going to have a different approach this time? Are we finally going to give the textbooks to the students and the parents to use? And the third point I would like to make is in regards in general about math. Why is it that every couple of years, the whole community, the board, the administration invest so much time and effort in finding and adopting new materials? Math is math. Math hasn't changed in the last 200 years. Can we decide on one math textbooks that we can use that is based on traditional, well-proven, efficient, and effective learning? Everybody's so preoccupied in finding out this new discovery methods of learning math, introducing kids to multiple ways of solving problems. At this level and at that stage of their development, I think kids need to learn the best and the most efficient way of solving problems, as opposed to being exposed to so many different ways of approaching a math problem or a math situation. So those are my comments at this point. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Any other member of the public wish to come forward? And to clarify for the public, it is a recommendation, it's a presentation tonight. The vote on the textbook won't come until the next regular meeting. So on to presentations. And so I'll turn this over to Dr. Tidal to bring his staff up and walk us through.
All right.
Is there going to be a?
There will be a PowerPoint, so we'll locate. We're going to try to do this with the lights on, if we can see it, because there's some documents that they're going to want you to look at at your table while you're doing it, and if it's dark, you may not be able to see them. My opening on this is, this is our first full-blown academic curriculum, K-12, and I'm very excited about that. When I came, and curriculum was not on a particularly regular schedule, so it was course by course. We were able to move it to get at least to a block of courses, a high school, middle school, elementary, but this is the first time I've been able to launch them all the way I think curriculum should be done, which is being able to see the whole scoping sequence from K to 12, have all the teachers work on it together. It does make it a curriculum effort. And we have a number of the staff who worked on this and have an interest in this sitting in the audience tonight, because it's a tremendous effort to do it, but I think the payoff in having a fully articulated K to 12 curriculum document is, I think it's a big milestone for the school system to be there and this sets the pace for the ones to come, which will also be done in a K to 12 manner. So with that, we have Dr. Boyce and Mr. Cummins from secondary and elementary, Sheila Farrar, who's our elementary liaison, and Greg Paglis, who's our social studies secondary-level curriculum leader in social studies, and they're going to take us through the presentation and the Q and A. If you give me a second to move, then we'll be good to go.
And my fellow listening audience, if you would introduce yourself as you speak.
Okay. I'm Greg Paglis. I'm the secondary curriculum leader for social studies. While that's worn up, I'll just, I would like to just say good evening, and we're very excited to be here tonight presenting our proposed revisions to the pre-K to 12 social studies program. Over the past several years, the entire department, with much help from others, has researched, discussed, written, listened to feedback, and continually revised our documents. The result is a program that reflects the latest research in social studies education. It's composed of deep and enduring understandings of content and skills, and best prepares students for college, career, and civic life. So the purpose of today's presentation is to provide an overview of the following elements of the process. We'll discuss the reasons for the curriculum revision, including explanation of the shifts in standards over the past several years. We'll provide an overview of the curriculum development process. We'll walk you through the structure of our documents, and provide an explanation of the various parts of the documents. We'll also provide an overview of the process we use to search for resources, and present our recommendations for textbooks. And we'll provide an explanation of our next steps, with approval from the Board of Education, and explain how we will evaluate its implementation. And we'll provide an overview of the estimated costs of implementation as well. So why revise the curriculum? The last revisions for elementary social studies were in 2003, so we're certainly overdue in elementary school, and with the new standards, the timing is exactly right. The last revisions in middle school and high school were in 2009 and 2010. A lot has happened in education in general, and in social studies specifically in the past seven years. What we're most excited about, as Dr. Tidal alluded to, is the vertical alignment of our proposed curriculum. With our revised curriculum real calendar, which was updated in 2014, we had the opportunity to work on all revisions pre-K through 12 at the same time. This was a great help in aligning the progression of content and skills from elementary through high school. As I mentioned, a lot has happened since 2009 and 2010, and certainly since 2003. In July of 2010, the Connecticut State Board of Education adopted the Common Core State Standards as the Connecticut Core Standards, providing teachers, students, and families with clear expectations of what a student should know and be able to do at each grade level. The standards focus on English, language arts, and mathematics. However, they also provide literacy standards in history, social studies, science, and the technical subjects for grades six through 12. In 2013, the National Council for Social Studies, working collaboratively with a great team of specialists in the field, and with representatives from 15 professional organizations, including the American Bar Association, the American Historical Association, Center for Civic Education, and the National Geographic Society, just to name a few, developed the College, Career, and Civic Life, or C3, framework. The purpose really was to build off the Common Core Standards, to make them social studies specific. The C3 framework is based on the most recent research in social studies education, and I'll provide more on the specifics of the C3 in just a minute. Then just last year, the Connecticut State Board of Education adopted the Connecticut Social Studies Framework. Under the leadership of Stephen Armstrong, the state consultant for social studies, and a former president of the National Council for Social Studies, and a former teacher and administrator in West Hartford, Mr. Armstrong and his team of Connecticut educators developed the state framework from the C3. I actually had the opportunity to be part of the review and revision process for the Connecticut framework that took place in the summer of 2014. So we're very excited about the C3 and the Connecticut framework. The standards in the C3 framework are inquiry standards, as well as content standards. The research is very clear that students show interest in learning history and social studies best when it's taught as an investigative process, like the practices of real historians, geographers, economists, or political scientists. Now I'll go into some in-depth into each of the four dimensions over the next few slides, but a quick, just a quick overview of the four dimensions of the inquiry process. Dimension one is all about the questions. A good investigation begins with a good question. Students are inherently curious, and the standards in dimension one are designed to get them engaged and excited about the content. Dimension two is applying the content-specific tools and concepts. We're running a content-driven discipline, and in fact, each phase of the inquiry process depends on students working deeply with the content. These new standards do not change that. In fact, they better embrace the content, something that was missing in the Connecticut Core Standards. The content knowledge will provide the confidence and motivation for students to think like social scientists. The standards in dimension three focus on gathering sources, evaluating sources, determining things such as bias, believability, corroborating evidence, developing claims or theories, as students begin to interpret the content in their own way. And dimension four, communicating conclusions and taking informed action, whether it's written, in a debate, a presentation, or simulation. The focus here really is on skills associated with citizen activism, and applying students' work in real-world situations. This slide provides a visual representation of the inquiry process. As I mentioned, the C3 framework really was a reaction to Common Core. It intended to take the skills of Common Core and make them social studies specific, and include the content-specific standards as well. As you see on the graphic, the Common Core standards are the backdrop. Student learning is at the core, facilitated by the inquiry arc and surrounded by dimension two, the four primary disciplines of social studies content. As you can also see from the graphic, the inquiry arc is not a linear process, but a set of interlocking and mutually reinforcing ideas. Now some specifics about each of the four dimensions and the standards that go along with them. The C3 encourages the use of compelling and supporting questions as a central element of the teaching and learning process. The standards in dimension one focus on developing questions that will frame and advance inquiry. Compelling questions focus on enduring issues and concerns within the discipline, and they require students to construct arguments in response. Compelling questions are questions a specialist may ask, a historian or a geographer, for example. They're written in student-friendly language. They're questions that will excite students, and they are both teacher and student-generated. Crafting good compelling questions can be much more challenging than it appears. In contrast to compelling questions, supporting questions focus on descriptions, definitions, and processes, and require students to construct explanations that advance their claims, to focus or scaffold their investigations, to contribute knowledge and insights. You can see at the bottom of the slide an example of a compelling question from the American Revolution. Was the American Revolution revolutionary? This is an intriguing question that can be explored through the disciplines of history, civics, economics, and geography. In thinking about supporting questions to scaffold this investigation, students might ask, how much change is required to be considered revolutionary? What were the political changes that came about as a result of the American Revolution? What were the social changes, the economic changes? Dimension two is applying disciplinary concepts and tools. The standards in dimension two focus on big disciplinary concepts that students need to understand and apply as they study the specifics defined in content objectives. Each of the four primary disciplines of social studies has an additional layer of three to four categories within each subsection. These categories provide an organizing mechanism for the foundational content and skills within each discipline. For example, with the subsection of history, there are four categories: change, continuity, and context, I'm sorry, change and continuity, perspectives, historical sources and evidence, and causation and argumentation. I can provide an example of a standard. One of the standards in this category is analyze examples of change and continuity in historical eras. That is an important standard that students will work with throughout the school year. A more specific content objective that would illustrate that standard could be examine the political, cultural, and economic origins of the American Revolution. And that's a content objective from our Grade 11 U.S. History document. I bring up the American Revolution again because it's a great era to illustrate both change and continuity. The consistent and coherent application of these standards throughout the grades will lead to deep and enduring understandings. Although dimension three includes a sophisticated set of skills, even the youngest children understand the need to give reasons for their ideas. As they progress through the grades, students learn more advanced approaches related to these skills. The standards in dimension three directly align to the Common Core State Standards to gather relevant information from multiple sources, both primary and secondary, and draw evidence from those texts to develop claims and counterclaims to analyze and interpret information. Now having worked independently and collaboratively through the development of questions, the application of knowledge and concepts, the analysis of sources and use of evidence, students then formalize their arguments and explanations. This is where thoughtful and persuasive writing continues to play a key role in social studies. However, communicating conclusions can take a variety of forms, such as discussions, debates, policy proposals, video productions, just to name a few. An important aspect of dimension four is in taking informed action, that's applying their work at times outside of the classroom in order to develop the skills and dispositions necessary for an active civic life. In one sense, dimension four closes the inquiry arc, but we know that new knowledge can lead to new questions, and communicating ideas in one setting can lead to new ideas about evidence. So again, the inquiry process is not linear at all, but fluid. The Connecticut Social Studies frameworks that were adopted in 2015 by the State Board of Education were guided by the C3 inquiry standards. It is not intended to be a state curriculum, but a framework for districts to revise local curriculum. And our proposed documents were guided by the Connecticut frameworks. So this slide provides an overview of the process for our curriculum development. The school year 2014 and 15 was our official research and review year, where we reviewed in great detail the C3, the Connecticut Social Studies framework, and our current documents. We also researched a variety of national standards, including history standards created by the National Center for History So, again, the inquiry process is not linear at all, but fluid. The Connecticut Social Studies frameworks that were adopted in two thousand fifteen by the State Board of Education were guided by the C3 inquiry standards. It is not intended to be a state curriculum, but a framework for districts to revise local curriculum. And our proposed documents were guided by the Connecticut frameworks. So, this slide provides an overview of the process for our curriculum development. The school year two thousand fourteen and fifteen was our official research and review year, where we reviewed in great detail the C3, the Connecticut Social Studies framework, and our current documents. We also researched a variety of national standards, including history standards created by the National Center for History in the schools, the National Geographic Geography standards, the national standards for civic and government, state standards from around the country, as well as curriculum from other districts in our region. Throughout two thousand fifteen, teacher curriculum writing teams wrote the draft documents, with much of the writing being done in the summer of two thousand fifteen. This included over forty teachers, and also included members of the library media department and other departments as well. In December of two thousand fifteen, we held three parent focus groups where we collected valuable feedback. And from December until now, the materials have been posted on our website for community feedback. We also received valuable feedback from state social studies consultant Stephen Armstrong, who worked with us throughout the process, and from Dr. John Tully, a professor of history at Central Connecticut State University, coordinator of their secondary social studies education program and a co-chair of the Connecticut Council for Social Studies. In April of this year, we presented our documents to the Curriculum Council for review and feedback, and throughout the entire process, the documents were continually revised based on the feedback received. So, all of our proposed documents are aligned to the Connecticut Social Studies framework and the C3 inquiry and content standards. They're driven by the use of compelling questions to spark curiosity, deepen investigations, acquire rigorous content, and enable students to apply knowledge and ideas. They're composed of deep and enduring understandings, concepts, and skills with direct and explicit connections to the Connecticut Core Standards.
Yeah, I'm Sheila Farrar. I'm going to just discuss some of the changes happening in, on the elementary level. In pre-K through grade one, we're continuing to emphasize the importance of understanding how communities work with rules and history and maps and basic economics. Children will move from themselves, their families, their neighborhoods, schools, and so on, in a developmentally appropriate manner. In the past, our second-grade curriculum focused on essential understandings related to the facts and history of our town, our state, and our country. But now, in alignment with the suggested frameworks, we put a greater emphasis on the people and citizens who make an, an impact currently and historically on our everyday lives. Understanding the unique geography and economics that define our local area will be covered as well. In third grade, there's a shift from the Native Americans and world cultures to a more in-depth look at how our town and state have played a part in America's story. Students will grapple with why people from the past, including indigenous peoples, choose to li, chose to live where our students are living today, and they'll incorporate economics, geography, as well as history and citizenship into their studies. Grade four, for as long as I could remember, has been known as the colonial grade. To align ourselves with the C3 and C Connecticut frameworks, we're moving from that time period up to fifth, the fifth grade, and shifting to a more regional study in fourth. Students will understand the unique history, economics, geography, and laws that define our region of the United States and compare them, themselves with other regions, while inquiring how our nation and continent compares with global regions. And in grade five, the content will shift from the Civil War, immigration, and twentieth century to early America. Students will unravel America's story while they inquire about topics such as exploration, indigenous peoples, the French and Indian War, and the Revolution. The overarching goal of fifth grade is to build a strong foundation of how the geography, economics, history, and government has shaped our nation. And it should be noted that we have been working closely with the educators at the Fairfield History Museum, and they're really eager to help us design programs to meet these changing needs. They are there to assist us with transition plans and try to make the experiences valuable for our students.
Okay, as far as proposed changes in the secondary documents, the most significant changes come in grades six and seven. Where we currently focus on ancient civilizations in grade six and geography for life in grade seven, we're proposing moving to a two-year course on world regions, embedding key standards in geography, culture, history, economics, and civics for each of the regions being studied. The purpose of this change is to provide students with a wide base of knowledge about the world and its many cultures, in which to build upon in grade eight and in high school, leading up to our global studies courses in grades nine and ten. The grade eight U.S. history course continues to be a chronological approach with a focus on themes running through each unit. We've also revised several units, including those covering the nineteenth century. At the high school level, we're proposing minor shifts in content in ninth-grade Global Studies and tenth-grade Modern Global Studies. Eleventh-grade United States History will remain a chronological survey, however, we've now embedded a focus on four primary themes to focus the content. Pending board approval, we're also proposing three new courses in high school. AP Comparative Government and Politics provides students with a global approach to how government and politics is conducted around the world. After using the United States as an initial model, students will investigate six case studies: the UK and the EU, Russia, China, Mexico, Iran, and Nigeria, all extremely important case studies. Sociology is a semester elective studying culture, social structures and norms, and social change. And Contemporary United States History will provide students with a thematic study of our history over the past several generations, and will explore the conflicting interpretations about the meaning of that experience. We've seen great excitement over these new courses in student interest and from the focus group participants in December. Along with these changes, we're also proposing no longer offering the full-year Psychology elective, although, of course, the AP course and the Semester Psychology elective will continue to run. And this will allow students to pair the Semester Psych course with the proposed Sociology course. We'll also no longer offer, offer the full-year Modern European History elective, although, of course, the AP MEH course will still run. And because of these cha, these changes, there is no FTE increase as a result of the new courses.
Here's a look at a sample document. All the pre-K through five documents begin with a clear description to summarize the big ideas that will be covered throughout the school year. Then, the central understandings are designated, or, excuse me, are designed to depict the broad learning goals. And then, the compelling questions are divided amongst the four disciplines and embedded in each grade level. They're the overarching questions that will drive instruction and inquiry. And then, each document shows the school year that has been divided up into three five-week units of study. This will allow teachers to alternate science and social studies throughout the school year. And authentic performance-based assessments, as well as in-class activities such as portfolios, projects, debates, and discussions, will monitor student progress and align with the Common Core and the inquiry standards. And finally, each unit is broken down with specific objectives and compelling questions and supporting questions, which are intended to generate inquiry and reflect the standards.
Okay, now, I'll walk you through a secondary document. The example on the screen is the grade six document, which I believe you have a copy of in front of you as well, the board members do. Each of the nineteen documents have the same structure. Each begins with an in-depth course description, highlighting the overall content and skills associated with the course, followed by an overview of where the content understandings and historical thinking and inquiry skills associated with the course were derived from. Beginning on the next page, you'll see the overview of the course. The central understandings highlight the overall course objectives and explanations, and expectations for the year. Next, for courses that contain them, you'll find the course themes. In this instance, for grade six, although through a geography lens, we have embedded the other disciplines of history, economics, and civics for each of the world regions that will be studied. Next is the course compelling questions. These are questions that will be traced throughout the entire course. Along with the course themes, this provides an overall focus and continuity to the units. Each document also contains a year at a glance, outlining each of the units in the course along with the unit compelling questions. The next portion of the document provides some guidelines for monitoring student progress. Each of these eleven areas are directly correlated with the standards in the C3 framework and in the Connecticut Core Standards as well. For each unit, and again, the example you see on the screen is from the first unit of the grade six document. Each unit begins with an overview, describes the unit in terms of both content and skills. The unit content objectives describe the specific content that will be studied in that unit, followed by the unit compelling questions, and the standards in each of the four dimensions emphasized in the unit, written from the Connecticut Social Studies framework. This portion also provides a correlation for each dimension to the Connecticut Core standards as well. As I mentioned earlier, we asked for feedback on our curriculum from, from several experts in the field, and those that were closely associated in the writing, review, and now implementation of the Connecticut framework. Steve Armstrong, the state social studies consultant, stated this: "I was impressed by all of the work done on the K-five documents. I especially applaud the changes you made in grades six and seven. I think the new courses are both compelling and engaging. The students in Fairfield will absolutely benefit from the work that you and your team did in creating this curriculum. According to all of the latest research on effective social studies instruction, you have created, you have created an outstanding curriculum framework." Dr. John Tully is a professor of history at Central Connecticut, and again, he's also the secondary social studies education coordinator and a co-chair of the Connecticut Council for Social Studies. And he responded, "The curriculum you and your team have created reflects the best thinking at the national and state levels of how to engage, motivate, and educate adolescents to reach their highest potential as students and citizens. Your concentration on having students use evidence and disciplinary literacy to answer big questions, questions that they will have to answer and reflect upon throughout their adult lives, is the best way to engage students in learning." He also added, "He was particularly impressed with our team's reorganization of the six and seven World Regional Studies classes," saying, "These classes will help students make sense of the world around them," and that "The split of U.S. history into chrono thematic surveys the way we did was an excellent idea."
As far, as far as resources go, once approved, the implementation guides for the pre-K through five social studies curriculum, including resources, will be researched and provided to the teachers by the two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen school year. It's our goal to provide purposeful and meaningful experiences for our students. With that said, we'll continue to work closely with our language arts, math, and library media specialists, science, everyone, to integrate the curricula, as well as local and state organizations, such as the Fairfield History Museum.
The resource review process for grades six through twelve was conducted in great detail over many months, and several factors were considered in our search, including content, readability, and rigor, and both student and teacher ancillary materials associated with each textbook. Throughout last summer and this past fall, teacher search committees for each course reviewed what was available and narrowed our options to two to three per course. Next, teacher review committees reviewed in depth each of our options and heard publisher presentations on the book and associated materials. Last month, we displayed the books for community viewing and feedback as well. The board has received the memo in the Friday packet highlighting our textbook recommendations for six through twelve. With board approval, purchase and implementation of these resources will take place over two years. For next school year, we are proposing the purchase of texts for grades six and seven, World Regional Studies, grade eight, United States History, all levels of high school United States History, including Advanced Placement, and the proposed new courses of AP Comparative Government and Politics and Sociology. All of this has been budgeted for next year. For the two thousand seventeen, eighteen school year, we're recommending the purchase of texts for grade nine, Global Studies, AP United States Government and Politics, AP Modern European History, and the Economics elective. And we'll continue to implement the current approved textbook in grade ten, Modern Global Studies, AP Psychology, the Semester Psychology elective, and Civics, Youth and Law. So, with approval, we'll be working on implementation guides this summer, with continued work on revising our common assessments based on the new standards. Also this summer, we will continue our, our work developing a progression of research and writing expectations, K through twelve. For this task, we will be working closely with the English Language Arts Department and with the Library Media Department, as well as with others. Although we have already done a considerable amount of professional development on inquiry, this will be an ongoing process through implementation, and teachers will continue to collaboratively plan in their small groups and as a wider department. Continuous evaluation of the curriculum will be conduct, conducted through classroom observations, informal feedback from teachers, administrators, students, parents, and other stakeholders, and from student data, including an analysis of our common assessments and AP scores. Finally, this slide highlights the anticipated cost of implementation over the next two years. For textbooks and professional resources, we are proposing an estimated three hundred and eighty-five thousand for two thou, for twenty sixteen and seventeen, and two hundred and forty thousand for the following year for grades six through twelve, with pre-K through five yet to be determined for two thousand seventeen and eighteen. For teacher committee work, writing implementation guides, we are proposing three thousand two hundred for elementary work that will take place in June of this year, from the current year's budget, and seventeen thousand five hundred for grades six through twelve, budgeted for two thousand sixteen and seventeen. Next year's pre-K through five work is yet to be determined. And for professional development and training of teachers, we are proposing six thousand five hundred for grades six through twelve for two thousand sixteen and seventeen, with a cost, again, for elementary yet to be determined for the following year. So, I'd like to end just by acknowledging everyone that collaboratively worked on this process over the past several years. Yeah, this has been a tremendous amount of work, and every member of the Social Studies Department played a key role in the process, obviously way too many to mention by name, but they're all on the screen. Along with members of other departments and, and other levels, including library media and special education, I would also like to thank the community members that participated in the parent focus groups and that provided feedback on our documents and textbooks. And just, just to say, this is an amazing department of teachers, and, you know, I, everywhere I go, I hear praise about them and what they do when, when I'm around town, and I truly want to thank them for their fantastic work. Actually, many of them are here tonight, and actually, they should stand up and be thanked. So, that's all we have, and we'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Do you have any wrap-up comments?
Thank you very much for the, not only the good presentation, but the work that went behind it. K-12 is a massive task, and so, thank you to the four of you who are in front of us and to the people in the audience, and especially to half the town that was listed on the slide.
That's what it took.
Questions from the board? Questions from the board? Ms. Eileen Lou McCormick, followed by Mr. Patton.
So, first of all, thank you for this stack of information, which is quite impressive. I know K through twelve is a huge, huge accomplishment, given how many changes have occurred, given the Common Core standards. My, my big question regarding this is really regarding content. I think the new approach with the big-picture questions is very admirable. I think that's a great way to think about it. It'll provoke discussion that kids will be able to engage with the people across. It'll provoke discussion that kids will be able to engage with with people across the world. I know Americans in the past have had a terrible reputation of being really non-fluent in social studies discussions outside of, you know, what's going on in Entertainment Weekly. So I think this is a huge feat, but I am concerned, I guess, with the content. And just to clarify for me, so the content from Grades Six through Twelve, we're going to be able to assure that the content delivery is going to be comparable throughout the district because we're using the same textbooks. And the textbooks are basically guiding the content that all the kids should be using when they answer these questions. Is that correct, or no?
Yeah, I mean, the textbook is one, the textbook is one resource that they'll be using. The standards also dictate that the students will be analyzing and reading many sources on the topics that they're investigating. And the idea behind the standards would be that they're synthesizing the information from different perspectives, working deeply with the content throughout the entire inquiry process. And yes, the textbook will be, will be a main source of information for background knowledge and to refer to throughout. In no way will it be the only source of information.
Well, I guess the concern I had when I first heard it delivered at the state level was that the questions were so open-ended and high-level that there really wasn't a way to assure equal content delivery to answer those questions, even from district to district, you know, from state to state. Somebody might choose to focus on the Industrial Revolution versus the American Revolution to answer one of the questions, or they may choose to select a different country, you know, China versus Europe to answer a comparative question. It was so broad in the questions that they asked that there was no delineation or specificity around the actual content that each child would have, so that it was possible that kids could walk away, having mastered very different parts of history. So what I wanted to make sure is that even with, at least within our own district, that the kids from school to school, classroom to classroom, would at least receive a common foundation of content, where teachers weren't necessarily pulling from one place in one classroom and deciding, you know what, I actually want to teach about the Vietnam War in my classroom. And then they, and so then people are answering with very different foundations. They're coming away with a very different experience and perspective on history because of the specific topics they've covered. But if we were all using the textbook as a common foundation, then that would kind of pull everybody back to the same common topics.
So I guess two points. Yes, we're all using a common textbook, and we're also all using the same, a common curriculum document with the content objectives explicitly laid out for us. So everyone's following those documents. So there's, I guess we're talking about two separate things here. We're talking about the inquiry standards, where the students are really investigating a topic, but the topic is really described in the documents themselves. So if you look at each of the units throughout all of our documents, there are specific content objectives that we're going through. So there will remain things like common exams. There will remain, you know, commonalities for sure across schools like there currently is. You know, the content itself isn't changing. Maybe the approach and the way the students are working with the content in terms of the standards have changed, but the content itself has not changed.
Okay, I just want to make sure those equal deliver, because I recall hearing that in some schools, they were using a textbook still, and other ones, they were relying more on handouts. And the nature of how, as we know, history is often slanted by the author. And so depending on who the author is that's delivering that message, students could come out with very different perspectives on history. So you kind of rely on the teacher to pull that back to the middle. But depending on the teacher also, they see the middle probably differently from each other. So I guess whenever I see a common textbook, at least that says, this is where we start from. And then that gives at least me some comfort that we are, we have the ability to deliver content equitably across the district.
So the answer is yes. I mean, yes, there's a, there'll be a common textbook, and, you know, common content objectives as well.
Okay, good. And then, so that gives me comfort from Grade Six through Twelve, because those textbooks are very clearly presented, and I could read them and I understood. So that brings me to, yeah, K through Five. It seems more vague in its presentation. I understand they're kind of little, but I would say that at this point in their lives, I would see this as a blank slate. And are we using this as an opportunity to basically populate them with facts, rather than having them take views on, without having facts first presented? It's kind of like, do you have a view on how we can multiply this without first having mastered addition and subtraction? You know, so I would love to hear how you're managing the content population at the elementary
Thank you. Mike Cummings, Director of Elementary Education. The intent at the elementary level, as it is at Six, Twelve, is when students, first of all, we want students to be challenged, and to your question about their response to those questions. There's an expectation throughout the curriculum, the social studies curriculum in particular, since we're talking about that, that when students respond to questions, when students raise their own questions, that their answers are going to be grounded in fact. Historians may differ in their opinions, but they differ in their interpretation based on the facts that are presented to them equally. So our work at the elementary level, pre-K through Five, this summer and into next fall, is to identify those materials that will support the curriculum that's being adopted. We will be identifying common materials across classrooms with an expectation that as we build the implementation guides, giving teachers the direction on how to use those materials that we do provide. Again, in delivering the essential knowledge that's important to then move to that level of higher-order questioning. We want, as has been stated already this evening, we want our students to actively engage in the curriculum. There's work to be done with our staff on developing questions, and then there's work to be done with our staff in helping kids and teaching kids how to develop their own questions, and then to engage in the debate that follows as they answer those questions.
So I appreciate the questioning part, and that's kind of new to the process. What I guess I still, and this kind of is, if I bring this back to, you know, world language or mathematics, I'm still going back to the foundation of what content are we populating them with, so that they can have an opinion on it?
The con, oh, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Yeah, 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 no, no, I'm just saying, because this is the time where they know, they know basically nothing, very little, on history, you know, local, national, world. And this is the opportunity, before they hit that sixth grade through Twelve, where they're, now they're going to ask big questions and analyze and compare, they can ask those same questions on familiar little topics close to them. But are we also using this as an opportunity to start populating them with historical facts? You know, I just didn't see any specificity on, you know, are they going to understand, you know, about the Statue of Liberty and where it came from, or the Revolution, or what happened in Fairfield, or, you know? What is the scope of the content that we are going to be delivering in each grade in elementary school, outside of understanding that who the policeman is and the teacher is and mom, and we all have different roles in our community? I get that, but are we actually redoing it in such a way that we're actually now importing historical fact and geography as part of the elementary curriculum? So it complements what's going on in the middle school and high school?
I think that, you know, and I don't think this is what you're saying, but I want to be clear, and the pursuit of fact for fact is not the intent of the expected outcome of the curriculum. The pursuit of fact to support reasoning and thinking skills, the inquiry process, is that work. So there has to be discretion in the delivery of fact. And part of our work, you know, is how is no longer, to some degree, teaching students the fact, but in teaching them the tools to recognize fact from opinion, because they have the ability to access facts at their fingertips now. And they do much of that outside of the school. Our work is, you know, and I think it's clearly defined in the curriculum, but there'll be further supplemented in the implementation guides, as we determine what will be the areas of focus at each grade level. Part of the work, and Ms. Farrar mentioned this, is the developmental appropriateness of the level of fact and the level of inquiry from a pre-K student or a K student, for example, to a fourth and fifth. But we are really looking at, and we want to pursue the deep inquiries into the social studies content, no matter the grade level. The most wonderful thing, you know, and I say this as somebody not yet with a year in the district, but, so everybody here already knows this, but the tremendous opportunity that this community offers, many subject areas, but particularly the area of social studies. And as Ms. Farrar mentioned, our work already with the Fairfield History Museum is designed to have students, to your question specifically, have a strong understanding of their community. But by understanding Fairfield and the choices people made in the professions they chose from the earliest settlement to the decisions that they made where they're going to live, the ideas extrapolate out of that, understandings of those four core areas, and apply them to sixth grade eventually, when they begin to look at ancient river civilizations. So there's this, there's this thematic approach that the curriculum is based on, will be the vertical structures which support us across the years. And elementary has a responsibility to lay that foundation.
I wonder if I could move on to other board members and then come back to you?
Yeah, I just want to, can I just conclude? I just want to understand what I took away from what you were saying. So at this point, the specificity of the content hasn't been particularly defined so that I could read exactly what content it is. You understand the big picture of what's to be delivered, but the specifics have not been defined like they have in Six through Twelve. Is that correct?
Well, we don't have, I mean, in Six through Twelve, with the selection of textbooks and things, you've, you know, you're making a, you're starting to define the facts of those textbooks and the way those textbooks, you know, contain that information. Elementary does not yet have that information. We are going to, I mean, one of the things we're looking at is supplementing the elementary units with highly engaging nonfiction trade books. We have to look at what's appropriate to supplement with maps and globes. Those are all pieces still to come.
So we haven't done that yet. So the content element has not been populated necessarily, only in big scope.
Only in the documents here.
Mr. Patton, followed by Mr. Calabrese.
So, yes, echoing again, you know, a tremendous, tremendous effort for our first K to Twelve curriculum revision. So I've got a bunch of stuff, but I'll just concentrate on two for now. So Grade Six and Seven, the change to the combined World Regional Studies. More of, I guess, a logistics question. Inevitably, you have to start, whatever year you're starting at ground zero, so, for example, if it's starting in the fall, you know, the sixth grade is fine, but the seventh grade wouldn't have had the first part of this, so how do you anticipate handling that transition for at least that first year?
Sure. So we will implement both Sixth and Seventh at the same time. The way we'll do that is with a revised unit, which we'll be working on. First unit for Seventh Grade, which will provide the background, the overall concepts of geography, the definition of culture, a lot of those things that would have been in that first unit in Sixth Grade. As a matter of fact, Sixth and Seventh Grade will be doing very similar first units for the first year, with some more sophisticated work being done in Seventh Grade. Things like demography and mental mapping, maybe, will be things just in Seventh Grade. But that first year, that first unit will be, will be similar, and it'll be a lot of that introductory kind of geography concepts and culture concepts. Then they'll move into their regions from there. Okay.
And so the Seventh Graders, for example, aren't going to miss out. I know traditionally Seventh Grade before has been very geography-oriented.
Right.
So they're not going to necessarily miss out on any part of that combined curriculum that would be in that new textbook.
No, no, not at all, not at all.
So, and then really, a general question on the new AP textbooks for the various classes, you know, from US history to comparative government and all that. We've had discussions like this before. Are the textbooks that, you know, that we're going to talk about in a bit, that you've chosen, are those actual textbooks that are used at universities? Or are those more textbooks that are covering the same material that a university class might cover, but on a high school level? You know, for example, the, you know, any of those classes might be a semester, whereas we've, you know, stretched it out for a whole year.
Most of the books, and I don't know specifically all of them, but most of the books are college books, but these are AP editions of college books. So they're rewritten with the direct correlation to the College Board course and the College Board standards. So they've taken the content from, from college books, in a lot of instances, but then they've, they've created AP editions of those books. So they're high school books.
So what, what does it mean to do that? You know, if you have, you know, your five or 600-page, you know, college US history or world history textbook, and now you've got an AP version of that? And again, in my opinion, I think you have more actual classroom time in high school than you would in a college class. So, I mean, is it expanded upon? Is it simplified?
It could be either. I mean, the College Board has a specific set of content that they're going to cover. So we don't, we don't dictate that the AP courses in terms of mostly of content, that comes from the College Board. And the textbooks that are aligned to those AP courses are directly aligned to the content that comes from College Board. So it may be expanded, or it may be contracted based on, based on the material. But I can give an example. The comparative government book may have different case studies in it for a college-level book, but they, they'll use the case studies that College Board has dictated, those six that I'd mentioned before. And then I might include a couple more just for supplemental and for some work that will be done after, or for comparison, but to make sure that they cover those six case studies. And that's, that's a good example, I think. Whereas a book that's made specifically for a college comparative government course may have, you know, India or France or Germany, or some of the countries that are not covered by the College Board course.
Okay.
Mr. Patton, if I could just interrupt one moment?
Sure.
The textbooks are here, so Dr. Title, who would some, who would a board member contact to say, let me come look at a textbook?
Dr. Boyce or Dr. Gleese, either.
Sure, okay, thank you.
They're available.
Go ahead, Mr. Patton.
Okay.
And I plan on doing that in the next couple of weeks, hopefully. I guess I'll, some, more of a general question in terms of your experience in this K to Twelve process. Did you find, did the team, really, a question for all of you, find it more challenging or invigorating or whatever in terms of at least more of the fourth and fifth grade transition to, you know, into middle school than, you know, than you would have had before, because we've never done this before?
Right.
And, and, you know, I know, I've seen, I saw on the giant laundry list there, a couple of middle, middle school social studies teachers that I'm very familiar with and glad to see their names on there. So was there a lot of, not arguing, was there, was there a lot of discussion as to what should be covered from that elementary school to middle school transition?
Challenging, yes, but also exciting.
Don't laugh all at once.
It was, it was a great experience, actually. It gave us an opportunity to sit down and really map out the content and what, what content will come back and what skills will continue to be worked on. And the progression of skills from kindergarten all the way through high school and really get a sense of that in a large picture was exciting, but it was also challenging at the same time.
Can I just add? We keep forgetting pre-K.
Sorry.
They're very important. Yeah, and also, I loved when we had all the parents together. And when we sort of divided them up into two secondary groups of parents and then the elementary. And when we got the elementary parents together, they were asking him more questions about the secondary, and they were really so interested in how it all played out, and they, they got so excited for their little ones as to, you know, they could see the whole vision of how it was laid out, and that was really exciting. And that was really exciting, I think.
I'm anxious to see how this plays out in the next two years. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Calabrese, followed by Ms. Pitko.
Thank you. First of all, I would just like to thank the four of you for putting on this great presentation. I thought it was well thought out. And to the 115 people that are listed on that back page, thank you very much. And for all the teachers that are here tonight, it is a lot of work to put something like this together. But clearly, you know, the last revision for elementary school was 2003. So you're talking 13 years ago, well overdue, even six, seven years ago for the middle school and the high school. So definitely glad to see it. Really happy to see that the process with the compelling questions and the supporting questions and all the investigative work that the kids are going to have to do to learn the information. I think right now in the, in the climate we're in, that's the type of learning that they're supposed to be doing. And I love that it's all tied back to the C3 framework and the, the new standards for all the things that you guys had listed. Everything looks very good here. So I'm excited about it. I'm excited about the extra courses, the additional courses you guys have added at the high school level. The AP course, I think, is going to be fantastic. One of the questions that I do have is probably either for Ms. Ferrara or Mr. Cummings. I think you had said that this will be alternating with science in the, at the elementary school level. So I assume that that means we're going to have less science? Or how does that work? How would that work? That's, that's the one big question I have. Being a biology person myself.
Right. Just, just looking at the elementary school day, looking at the amount of topics that need to be taught in the amount of time you have the kids. Social studies and science, many times, for lack of a better word, gets bumped by the assembly that shows up that week or, you know, different things like that. So instead of expecting that every teacher will be teaching social studies every single day, every day of the school year, and science as well, to, to divide it up and to have trimesters and to alternate, we found would assure that these topics are met and covered. And if we plan our lessons properly, we can really get deeper and more interesting as opposed to, you know, spread out thin over long periods of time.
Okay.
I just want to add to that a couple of things. One, that is the current arrangement now, that there's this alternating of science and social studies. But the other thing is, as was mentioned during the presentation, the curriculum work this summer is a combined curriculum work of the social studies, English language arts, and library media. One of the things we're consciously trying to do with the social studies and will do again when science comes on board is use the English language arts reading period to also develop those skills and content acquisition that come through reading, speaking, listening. So one of our ongoing challenges at the elementary level always, but also one of the great opportunities because very often the one teacher teaches everything, is to build connections across the parts of the day in the curriculum so that they're mutually supportive.
I think that's a great way to tie it together. That's it. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Ms. Pitko, followed by Mrs. Maxon Canelli.
I too want to thank you, the four of you, the educators and the parents who all worked on this. I imagine 13 years of waiting for social studies, history, you're, you're really excited about moving forward. I, I really want to commend you for putting in the type of assessments that you're going to give. I know that you don't currently have a state assessment, so that you're going to use portfolios and projects. Really speaks to the whole different types of learners. I am a teacher, I don't know if you know that, and I teach middle school. And I was recently defending putting curriculum cursive into our curriculum. And the fact that I used was, how will they read historical documents?
Mrs. Maxon Canelli.
Likewise, thank you. Wonderful presentation. Actually thoroughly enjoyed reading all the curriculum documents and basically understanding all the curriculum documents. It's a, it's a nice experience. Also, I don't know if you could tell from your seat, I've got about 18 sticky notes up here. So I will send most of my questions to you as opposed to using up the next hour and making...
Thank you.
Yes, I thought you'd say that. A couple of questions I wanted to ask upfront, and then I will send the rest to you. I was wondering if there's any kind of skills matrix. I know English, English language arts with the Common Core has something like that. And it would seem to make sense that as you do this professional development and you're pulling in these different subject teachers, that there is that common understanding of, I don't know if that's the right word for it actually, I mean, but that idea of a skills matrix, that if you're talking about a certain level of research or inquiry or handling counterclaims, et cetera, that it's something that there's a common expectation across all of the subjects. And so that the, because I just know how, again, especially in elementary school, how jam-packed those days are. And the more overlap there can be, the more it frees up the teacher for his or her own creativity. So I was wondering if something like that exists.
It's in the works.
Ah.
It is. And it's something we've been thinking about for a while, actually. And with the new standards, it's the perfect time. We actually have begun to schedule out some days this summer, working with the language arts and English departments in the secondary and with the library media people and with other people, special ed. And really create a, a progression of skills, I guess is the kind of way that we've been describing it. First, starting with some, some shared language, some common language that we can use across all, all departments. And then really looking in the area, at the areas of research and at writing. And probably starting at, at grades eight and nine and working out from there. But yes, it's in the works and it's, and it's something that, that we hope to have a, a very solid draft of this summer and continue to work on it until we're happy with it. But I'm glad you bring that up because it is something we've been working on.
That would be absolutely wonderful. So thank you. Another question out of curiosity. I know, I believe the state said for high school US history that the world begins with 1898. I was curious what, how formed your decision to go prior to that, and thank God that you did. But I was wondering, how was it, was that just input from the teachers? How did that come to that decision?
So, so for, for those of you who aren't aware of, the, the state has recommended that US history be split up in basically three blocks. In fifth grade, up through about the, the revolution, in eighth grade from the revolution through the late 19th century, and then in high school, basically concentrating on the 20th century and the present era. And we debated this for honestly not, not very long. It didn't seem right. It didn't seem right that the last time that students would be working with topics such as slavery and the Civil War would be in eighth grade or the Constitution. So, and this was something that we did talk about with the state consultant and with Dr. Tully, who's a co-chair and one of the writers of the document. And as a matter of fact, in the letter he wrote back to us, he said that he loved the idea of the chronothematic approach to US history, and he wished that it was something that they had recommended. So it's, like I said in the presentation, the document that came from the state was not, is not a required document. It's one of the things that they put in as a suggestion, as a recommendation. And I think we'll see a lot of districts go the route more closely to what we've done in talking with other districts that we've, we've had similar conversations.
Thank you. I know one district that saw these and was very impressed by them, so I'll just pass that along to you. So I was shopping them around a little bit.
Not to be named.
Not to be named.
The G?
Yes.
Ends with an H?
Yes. I also had a question about the AP psych course. Has that now been changed from a year to a semester?
No.
Because the document says semester at a glance. Is that just a, I, I knew that the elective had been, but the AP psych also says that. So that's not correct.
That is not correct.
Okay. I was wondering how that was going to happen.
If it does say that, that is something that should have come up in feedback a long time ago. So I'm glad it's still technically a draft at this point.
Okay.
And that'll be changed.
And then I think that's, I, I guess, so the nature of the professional development this summer, then? That will be curriculum leaders from those departments?
Yes.
And would science be in on that as well? I mean, obviously, they're now in their drafting stage, but certainly could keep from duplicating efforts in a year.
Right now, we have planned work with English language arts and with library media. And we hope to include others in the process as well, but those are the ones that we have planned right now.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Other questions? I only have a couple, but any other questions from board members? The professional development at $6,500, I'm always concerned that there's, we just have not provided enough time and enough money to get all of the teachers to get through not just this, but all of the implementation guides that will be thicker than this, I suspect. Are you satisfied that we've got enough time and money set aside for that?
I guess we could always use more, but...
You can ask the governor.
Yeah. No, the, the summer work and the work on the implementation guides is, is also critical. And, and that 17,500 that we have in there is essential time, not only to write the, the implementation guides, but also for the teachers to work together and develop some of the inquiries and things like that along the way. So that professional development and training, I guess, really falls in with things like training teachers for the new AP course, for example, sending teachers to different conferences around the state and elsewhere outside of the state. And a lot of the, the professional development on inquiry not only will happen this summer with working on the implementation guides, but also it happens, you know, in, in our department, in our department meetings, in their common planning times, their small groups in their schools. So like I said, I guess that we could always use more, but I guess I include both of those numbers as professional development.
Good point, thank you. And my, my compelling question is, not the detail of pre-K through 12, but my compelling question is, will this create more engaged young adults?
Absolutely.
Once they get out of high school, will they be more engaged in their local and state and national community? Will someday somebody be willing to run for the Board of Education?
Absolutely.
Because they learned in high, in, in school how important civic engagement is?
Right.
So how have you moved the needle, needle that might make sure that happens?
Right. I guess, I guess the best thing I can point to is that last, those standards in that last dimension, which is taking informed action. You know, sometimes when I talk to administrators about this, they get worried because they think they're going to have students protesting in front of their office after every, every topic or every, everything that comes up. But, but the, but the purpose of that, of those standards in that dimension is to really not only work with the content and develop a, an argument and have a product at the end, but to take that next step as well. Whether it's, you know, writing to congressmen or even local officials or, you know, maybe even attending a, a meeting like this and voicing their opinions. We're, we're encouraging that and we're, we're already doing a lot of it. And with the new standards, it'll, it'll be increased. So yes, I think, I think we'll have some great candidates down the line.
Thank you. Mrs. Gerber?
Yeah, hi. Thank you so much, and especially Dr. Brookley's and Dr. Boyce. You met with Mrs. Maxon Canelli and I a really long time ago, I think like almost a year ago, to talk about this. So it's so great to see all of this that's come to fruition. And I just had a question about the new courses in the high school. Do you have any sense of how many sections, how many students will be taking those?
Sure. I, I don't have numbers in front of me, but I could say that they've been very popular. We have, I think, a total of three sections of the comparative government, which is amazing for a first year. That's across both schools. The sociology course is, is very popular. I, I want to say it's about maybe six or seven sections. And it's a semester course that a lot of them have paired with the psychology semester. And the contemporary US history course, there is currently one section at, at each school. So I think those, that's a good start for, for the first year. And I, I think all of those courses are of high interest, and I think they'll continue to grow.
Okay, thank you. And thank you also to all of the, the teachers. I have, see so many familiar faces who have had at least one of my children over the years. And the social studies program, I found, has always been incredibly strong, and my children have learned so much from it. So I think it's fantastic that you're taking it another step above that. So thank you.
Thank you. So thank you very much. This will be on our next regular meeting agenda for the, thank you again.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Mr. Morabito, I think you are up next on item 7A, and this will be a voting item, so I will go to the public for a comment. The recommended motion is that, recommended motion is that the Board of Education approve the plans and specifications for the Fairfield Woods Middle School Roof Replacement Project, TMP 051 KG FG as enclosed. Do I have a motion? Mrs. Gerber, Mr. Calabrese, Mr. Sal, Morabito, and Mr. Cullen, welcome back from the Holland Hill Building Community.
Thank you.
Please walk us through.
Good evening. This is part of the school construction grant process. The building committee has approved the plans that are before you for submission to the SCG for their approval to allow us to bid the project. The roof project at Fairfield Woods is 17 roof sections, approximately 95,000 square feet in area. Roof was last replaced in 1991. And we are hoping to do it all in one summer.
So the warranties expired last year, which also means we can get reimbursement from the state. The warranties have to expire for us to apply. This is a project that we've already approved. The funding for it has already been approved. The state, as you know, has requirements for us to re-approve projects at certain points in time, and that's why it's in front of our agenda at this time. Any questions from the board on the roof project? There are no bathrooms. Any, any questions from the board on the roof project? No, I'm not inviting, I'm just asking. Mr. Llewellyn, followed by Mr. Patton.
Are we going with a single ply or double ply here?
It's going to be a multi-ply roof.
It's going to be a multi-ply. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Patton.
I cringed to even ask this question, but you never know. We always have surprises that pop up. Has since the original iteration and this, this final plan, has anything changed that was of any surprise to anybody?
No, we have some good news, actually. The, there has to be an asbestos abatement study before they core into the roof or tear it off, and those results came back negative.
Oh, good.
So that was good news.
Excellent. Thank you. That's it.
Mr. Patton, Mrs. Gerber?
Just to confirm, this is the SPSBC that's the building committee for this?
Correct.
Okay, great, thanks.
Other questions from board members on the roof project? Seeing none. Out to the public, any members of the public wish to come forward to comment on the Fairfield Woods Middle School Roof Replacement Project? Seeing none. Back to the board for, for a motion that the Board of Education approve the plans and specifications for the Fairfield Woods Middle School Roof Replacement Project, but the number there as enclosed. I'll pause for a moment so we get a voting member at the table. All in favor of the roof project, please raise your hand. It's unanimous. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
7B with two enclosures, I believe, are the policy committee? I think that's enclosure number three and number four.
Yes. So enclosure number three, which is the mandated policy for weapons and dangerous instruments. It's, we got the, this is part of our K audit. Again, we're still working our way through that feedback. And so much of this wording actually had previously been in the policy that's attached as well, 5114, suspension and expulsion. But it's been pulled out as it's separate. So the fact that we didn't have this as a separate policy, it's not that we were not in compliance when this says mandated, it's that we had it wrapped up within another policy, and this is now pulling it out separate and apart. So that's 5131, and then you can see suspensions and expulsions, 5114, which, again, by and large, the, the language is, you know, coming from the state statute, being in compliance with that. I remind the, the board that as with the ones that we've been bringing up in the past few months, by no means were we going through suspensions and expulsions with a fine-toothed comb at all. This was about making sure that it was consistent with weapons and dangerous instruments. instruments when we pulled this information out, and then new language to be consistent with state statute. And the other content of this, we were not looking at, at all. We were not trying to do an overhaul of suspensions and expulsions. So, in terms of content, there's vast parts of this that were not part of our policy committee conversations. So, we bring these to the board for consideration, and if you have any questions now, we'd love to have them. Otherwise, as always, I appreciate getting questions, hopefully in advance of the next meeting, so that if there's something I need to look into or consult with Dr. Tidal on, that I have the chance to do that.
And as a policy, the template, if you will, comes from KAB originally, or?
Certainly for 5131, yes. 5114 had previously been, I believe it was 5119 in our current policy. So the suspension and expulsion is a current policy of ours altered, but the other one is by and large from KAB.
Thank you. Any questions? If not, we will put this on the agenda for the next regular meeting for action. Any questions from board members? Please forward any questions you might have to the policy chair, so she can be ready to answer it at the next meeting. Mr. Patton?
Just to clarify, are we, are we doing questions on both of these together? Or do you, or do you want the weapons first?
If you ask them, if you have a question right now, ask both of them for both policies.
Sure, different questions. But, all right, so on the, on the weapons and dangerous instruments, I guess in regards to the conduct off school grounds versus on school grounds, was that information that?
Wait, I apologize. Where are you?
Last full paragraph on 5131, when considering whether...
Gotcha. Okay.
So basically, just in general, for conduct for off-school grounds versus on-school grounds, and, you know, related punishments, or what is, is, did that information that's in the policy come from KAB, or is, or the state?
This language, actually, I believe, had originally been in our suspensions and expulsions. So this was part of our own previous policy that we moved to this policy.
That you moved it to over here, okay.
Yeah, I've, I've got the old one here, but I believe that that's, that this paragraph came straight out of our own policy, but we wanted it in the weapons and, in the weapons policy.
Okay, I just wanted to know if there was, you know, if we had to create criteria, you know?
And I assure you, I created none of these definitions.[759.82][759.82](laughter)
No, so there is a distinction in the law with respect to conduct that can be expellable, and it differs depending on whether the conduct occurs on school property or off.
That's where I was going.
This is consistent with that legal distinction.
Okay. That's pretty much all I have there, and then on the...
And just to follow up, Mr. Patton, so I'm, this did come directly out of the suspension and expulsion, and I could give you the section and part, but it was just taken out in its entirety.
That's fine. Okay, Dr. Tidal pretty much answered what was going through my head. In terms of the, the suspension and expulsion, what was the? Oh, there, I don't know what page this is. Students...
If you give the letter number, if you give the letter...
B, five, the end.
Wait, so 5114, and then what's the letter?
C.
Gotcha.
No, that's the number. Should've talked about the outline.
He said C.
So 5, 5C.
G, thank you.
On page G, oh, I'm sorry. Don was pointing out something, and I'm like, no, no, that's not what she's talking about, but it was.
And that's 5C that is in blue.
Correct.
Okay.
So I thought you were talking about the outline numbers, not the...
And your question, Mr. Patton?
Anyway, my question is related to, again, I don't know if this is a change, or this was kind of pulled from somewhere else. In terms of the definitions, maybe it's not here. My question is to the definitions of expulsion, where there is references to more than 10 days out of school. Is that a, is that a new definition from the state? Is that a?
That's always been the definition of an expulsion. A suspension is 10 days or less. An expulsion is
10 days or...
11 days or more.
11 days or more. Okay. I didn't know if that was a new
No.
Definition.
Now, the changes in here have to do with the state statute that changed about pre-K to suspensions. Elder school suspensions were pre-K to, caused the language changes that are in here.
Gotcha. Okay, that's it.
Any other questions? I guess you get the last question, Mr. Llewellyn.
And I, I mentioned this earlier to Ms. Maxine Cannelly, and it relates to something you just addressed, Dr. Tidal, which is...
Get closer to the mic.
My mic's not working.
Need a better mic.
Which is the in-school versus out-of-school, and kind of the jurisdiction that the school has out of school. And in reading this, I wasn't too clear as to that which the school can have kind of jurisdiction over. In other words, you know, a very simplistic reading, okay, a child owns a BB gun. Is that expellable? The way I read this, it almost sounds like it could be.
If it's on school property?
But see, it's not always clear there. So we need to kind of tighten that language up potentially later? But that gets back to a conversation we had had, which is that wasn't the intent
Right, exactly.
That's run through.
Right, because if we, if they start going through all of these pages of all these policies, they'll be added. So I think, I think what we discussed before was, if anybody has questions about the rest of the policy, we are going through other policies, and that can be put on the agenda for discussion or tightening up. Right now, we're just trying to get all the mandated ones through, and that if a mandated one causes a change in an existing one, we want to make sure the existing one is consistent with the mandated one. That's the reason you're seeing this one.
Yep, okay.
Makes sense.
Yep, thank you.
So this will be on for action at the, these two policies will be on for action at the next regular meeting. Item 7C, Superintendent's Recommended Budget Adjustments. Dr. Tidal?
All right. So this has been quite the confusing budget year. So what we know is that the RTM approved a budget that was recommended to them from the Board of Finance without any changes. And so our obligation as a board, regardless of what happens at the state level with revenue to the town, that's a whole separate issue, is we need to bring our budget into compliance with the appropriated amount. During the course of the discussion at all these various town bodies, there were suggestions, sometimes very strong suggestions, about where such a reduction could come from. But I want to be clear that it's up to the board ultimately to decide where the reductions come from. Other town bodies can suggest them. If we think it's wiser to take it from somewhere else, then we can make that decision. However, this could be a first for me. I think actually the suggestions that were made by the town bodies are logical, and I think it's in the board's interest to follow those suggestions, particularly with respect to health insurance. Because anytime we, we mess around with the health insurance without the express consent of the town bodies, we are in some jeopardy. So I have, with Mrs. Muncell, put together a recommended budget adjustments that do what I just suggested, and they are not particularly exciting, and are in conformance with what was brought forward to us from the RTM Monday night. I believe Meg has some extra copies for the crowd.
And you can either hand them out or put them on the table back in the back.
And the, so just in terms of the numbers, the Board of Ed approved a budget of $165,393,561. After all the ins and outs of the other town bodies, the final budget appropriation is $163,658,561. It's at the bottom of the second and last columns. Therefore, the board, to bring its appropriated budget into alignment with that, needs to reduce this budget by $1,735,000. Separate from what may be going on at the state and so forth, in terms of possibly being asked by town bodies not to actually expend our entire appropriation, that's a secondary question, and that's not something that we need to take action on right now. So the way this is laid out is essentially, the reductions I'm recommending, which are in conformance with what the whole discussion was, if you were paying attention, listening, watching, in present. There was a huge consternation over the fact that we budgeted for seven additional elementary teachers, because we had eight sections that were very close to needing a teacher, and one section that was close to not needing the teacher. And so the net in there was seven FTEs. In the past, we've never budgeted this way. This was a new concept in budgeting. In the past, we've simply had to find the money elsewhere in the budget, whether it's through extra retirements, whether it's through extra turnover, whether it's through maybe some other expenses coming in under budget. But we've always been able to absorb the additional teachers, and the boards didn't feel that we were needing this, this money. At the same time, number of the board members, particularly in the Board of Finance, said that should we have this in here, and for some reason we don't need seven teachers, they would expect the board would then turn that money back to the town. So, my recommendation is that in fact, we remove the funding for these teachers from the budget, and we would take them from the detail in the budget book where we outline exactly which positions would go. However, our ultimate staffing at the elementary level will be done per Board of Ed guidelines, and if those teachers are needed, they will certainly be hired. And I don't want people thinking that we're going to have class sizes that go above the district guidelines. So we will still manage the district guidelines. This is a way to, you know, bring the budget back into the way we had done it previously. I thought this was a good idea, but obviously, a lot of people who are voting on our budget disagreed with me, and we had lovely conversations about that. The rest of that next section has to do with the health insurance account. As you know, in the changeover, we've had a changing landscape with respect to our health insurance. We sent you the most recent experience, which shows that that account continues to be positive. And so the two cuts were made, one by the first selectman, then one by the Board of Selectmen, and then the Board of Finance actually added back in $250,000 for the express purpose of that money going towards health insurance, because they were nervous that the other two bodies had maybe gotten a little too aggressive. So I'm recommending the health insurance account be reduced by the net of those three figures. And then the last piece has to do with special education. In all the budget proposals that I've seen, and we're continuing to research what may come out of the legislature as their final budget, the grant that we get from the state called the excess cost grant was reduced. $8 million across the state, the impact of Fairfield being about $250,000. And recognizing that, when the first selectman's budget came out, he actually cut the budget by less than the $980,000 in the health insurance line, but rather he added back in $250,000 with the express understanding that that would be the board's way of being held harmless from the grant that it would not be receiving for special education. And so I've added to the accounts that typically are the accounts that cause us to receive the special ed excess cost grant, and that's about $250,000. So that's the net, and that's how we get there. I think this is the easiest and most logical way out of this particular box, and I'm presenting it as a first reading kind of, because again, this just happened Monday, with the expectation that the board will make a final decision on this at the next meeting.
I would only add one comment. The BOs cut for elementary teachers, I think honestly it should say BOs, BOf, because the Board of Finance was asked not to replace all seven teachers, but to try and put three teachers back in, under the concept that it's not likely that we're going to not have one more student move into one neighborhood in one grade between now and October 1st. But the Board of Finance rejected that. So both bodies really challenged the underlying assumption that was, that our budget was built on. Questions from board members? Mr. Llewellyn?
In terms of any potential cuts that'll be coming down from Hartford, can you address that, please?
Sure. What we have said to the town was that should the town experience a revenue shortfall based on what Hartford does, that's essentially what the issue would be. The proposals floating around now show the revenue to the town could be, the last number was about $2.3 million less than what the town built its budget on total. That we had said that we would play ball with the town on that, that we would examine our budget and discuss what contribution we could make to that in the sense of not expending a certain amount of our budget over the course of the year, even though technically and legally the board could expend all of the budget that's appropriated. But we've always cooperated with the town when there's been an issue, and without discussing specific numbers, we've been no discussion about what that burden might be for the Board of Ed. However, given the most recent health insurance that showed that our projected balance now, above and beyond what's in here, is about $700,000, they have said that certainly if that holds, that that would be certainly a contribution the board could make out of that fund, and of course, that would have no impact on operations or any of their other initiatives. So, we're waiting to see, first of all, what comes out of Hartford. We're waiting to see what the Board of Finance does with the mill rate. We're waiting to see what the expectation is about how this could be handled on the town side, and then we'll have some discussions about what we can do on our side to help out with that. But I fully expect that because of the, where we are with the health insurance, that the, you know, vast majority of our contribution's going to come out of that, and that the remaining contribution, whatever we need to do, will be handled in a way that, that will not have an impact on students or programs or services.
And if you could, please, thank you for that. If you could go to the medical retention update that you provided to us. If we look at the last two columns, number 11 and 12, three-quarters of the way down is a line reserved for potential claims and fees.
Yes.
It dropped from 500 to 250, I think.
Yeah, that's, what that really is, is, I think, Doreen, that was our way of putting in the 250 back in that the, the town put in.
Okay, because I didn't see it up top.
It's not on top, but we've been working to update this with the town so that it's clear, but it doesn't change the numbers, but that's really what that is. So what's left in there, that 250 that's left, and this was the understanding with the town, all the town bodies, that the reason that's sitting there is about $100,000 cushion, I guess, for potential bad experience, above and beyond what we have. And $150,000 that they estimate we're going to need to pay Aon to continue consulting work with us. And we don't know the details of that arrangement with Aon, you know, I would hope that maybe we can negotiate that to a lower figure, but that's where the 250 comes from. Aon previously had been under an agreement with the town, where they get, it was done on a commission basis. But now that we're going to basically a fully insured model, there's no commissions for Aon in this, so we have to change to a fee-for-service model with Aon. So that's a placeholder for that, and that's where the 250 comes in, but really that reflects the, the add-back from the Board of Finance.
And Aon's role going forward, if we're going to be under a quasi-fully insured, is what?
Well, it's, I think, that's to be determined, you know, and, and I have to say that, you know, Mr. Mayor's been talking to Aon about that. We have not been really part of that discussion. Certainly, all these transition issues, this run-out, and making sure the run-out is handled correctly, and make sure we're not, you know, our rights are protected with respect to, you know, Cigna and the others during the whole run-out, and verifying that the run-out numbers are correct. Certainly in this first year, I can see Aon having a fairly substantial role. The other thing they do for us, and they're continuing to do right now, is they actually have to go through the process of setting the official rates, because the rates are blended between actives and retirees, and that's a technical thing that they do that we need their help with. Although that's being done in the current year, but I could see that also happening, say, next April as well. So I think in this first year out, we're probably going to need some Aon services, and I don't know the exact scope of them, because we really haven't been part of this. And I think as time goes on, we're going to need less and less of Aon, and then I think... And I think as time goes on, we're going to need less and less of Aon, and then I think hopefully that cost will drop.
So are retirees moving to the new state plan?
Yes.
So can you explain your comment about the blended between actives and retirees?
Right, so under the law, we're not allowed to charge differential rates for health insurance, actives and retirees. And so the state plan, as many plans do, charge a different rate for retirees than for actives. And so we charge, since you can't charge the different plan, you have to blend the two rates to come up with a middle rate that's fair to everybody. And Aon has the expertise to determine that, and the credibility with all the employees, and so we count on them and their methodology to determine the blended rate. We used them previously, when we were doing the estimates on this, they gave us their estimate on the blended rates, and we'll continue to use their methodology to do it, but that's why we have to do it that way.
So it sounds like the 150 for Aon is a one-time thing, with a smaller piece potentially recurring?
Yeah, I think that could be a first-year issue, and I think that quite likely should be less in future years.
Okay.
That'd be my estimate, but again, I mean, this was something that was mentioned at a meeting, the chief fiscal officer had discussed with Aon, negotiated this deal, and Doreen and I are going, all right, well, it would be nice if we just kind of knew the details. So I don't have any greater answers on that, because we've got a lot of fish to fry on this, and we've been carrying it as a placeholder, as it's an estimate. Obviously, if it turns out that that number's only $50,000, and that's another 100, that would be to our advantage and would be, you know, part of any contribution we might have to make to the town.
So if we look at this and the reserve is not needed, there's about $800,000 here, the 700 plus the 100.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, so we're in pretty good shape if that holds.
The only comment I would make on what to do with the state number once it is known is, first, on a unanimous basis, the RTM supported our spending plan. There has been discussion as to whether, whatever the number is, it should be shared between mil rate, a reduction of town-side expenses, and a reduction of BOE-side expenses in some shared ratio that is negotiated. And as Dr. Tidal said, we are in charge of our budget, but that we've always relied on the town to help us in times, and the town has always relied on us to be helpful to the town. So it's in our long-term, as well as current best interest, to be engaged in this. My personal hope is that it will be a three-way solution and not a two-way solution, laying it off all on expenses, but that's a personal hope. So this will be on the agenda for action at the next regular meeting. I have no doubt that the time that is going to take for the state to actually act and whatnot, that we won't be probably addressing whatever the state does until, who knows when?
July.
I think he was about to say August, but you know.
No, 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 we're going to get this all set. Everybody's going to be happy.
So.
Promise.
So now we're back to textbooks. So item 7D, and who is coming forward to speak on first reading of recommended elementary math textbook?
Well, we don't have a presentation on this. We have a memo that you received from Mr. Wakeman, and Mr. Cummings is involved in that, so I'm going to presume that you've all read the memo. This was obviously a priority for the board in the budget this year, and that, you know, a number of teachers were involved in this process as outlined in here, and we wanted to make the best possible use of the resources, because the textbook line is not going to be impacted in a negative way by any action that the state takes. So we will have the resources to purchase this resource should you adopt it at the next meeting. So if there are questions, we can ask Mr. Wakeman and Mr. Cummings to come up, but there's no presentation on this. The presentation is in the form of a memo.
And if you wish to look at these, please contact the central office and come in and take a look at it before the next regular meeting. Mrs. Loomacormick.
I wanted to understand what you based your recommendation on for Bridges. I understand the other books that were available in central office was the Eureka, Engage New York books, and it looked like from your analysis, those were the two finalists from the committee.
And again, for the benefit of the TV audience, just introduce yourself.
Sure, Walter Wakeman, the curriculum leader for Math and Science at the elementary level. I'm sorry, your question again, just so I answer directly?
Yeah, so I see that Bridges and Engage New York, the Eureka, were the two highest-ranked from your committee. And I wanted to understand, what was it about Bridges that you found so compelling? Because when I go online and search for Bridges and look at the history of its reputation and understand that this is a new edition, and there's very little said on it, but lots of negative stuff on its historical content, I just have to wonder how you arrived at recommending Bridges over all these other time-tested, and some of them very contentious programs, but nonetheless, have been around for a long time, and this new Bridges has very little on the new edition and lots of negative on the old edition.
The process that we looked at was, again, what's unusual about this process now is we're not bringing forward a curriculum, we're just looking for the resources to support the current curriculum that's in place. And so before I begin in answering your question, I first of all, want to thank the board for this opportunity that is highly unusual, but it is a great opportunity for us at the elementary level, to be able to look at resources to fill any gaps and holes that we found as we've been going through this process. The other group that I would like to acknowledge and thank, many of whom are here tonight, is the textbook review committee. They were exceptionally dedicated to the process and very objective in their review of an open-mindedness and looking at the resources that were brought forward. They were primarily looking at the elements in our curriculum around focus coherence and rigor, as well as information that was garnered from surveys that primarily focused on the needs of teachers and what we heard from parents. And again, that's been expressed in the document or the memo that you received. And so that was, those were the criteria that sort of helped focus the group in how we looked at the resources. There was a number of other opportunities that we took advantage of, from reviews that were done by other organizations, as well as talking to other area districts and having conversations with other area districts about how they're satisfied with the resources. So all of that information was being presented to the committee as part of this process. And so we went through a winnowing process, as they went through and reviewed each of the resources, and highlighted which ones they felt they needed to move forward. And so we continued to move this forward, the process forward, until it came down to the Eureka and, Eureka Math and the Bridges as the two primary resources to focus on. From there, as outlined, we asked for the parents' input on this. That information then was, all of the information was taken back to the committee. From the beginning of our process, we reviewed it, including the parent feedback, and that's where a decision was made to land on the Bridges resource.
Thank you for that. What specifically was identified from all these surveys and discussions? You mentioned certain needs or interests were identified from the parents and the teachers. What were those specific things? Because we never, I don't think we ever saw the conclusion from all.
If I can direct you, if you have the memo in front of you?
Yep.
I believe it's on the second page. We asked for input on the strengths of what we are currently implementing, or using for implementing, and that the conceptual understanding, the peer-to-peer discourse, and students' problem-solving and communication. Those things were also echoed in our district data and our instructional rounds as strengths, but they were also identified, both in the responses we heard from parents as well as from teachers. But the areas of need, if you look right underneath that, were additional skills practice, the enhanced school-to-home communication piece, that includes the homework. And it also included things like skill practice, as well as a common question that we would hear from families is, I don't understand how my child is solving the math, it doesn't look like the way I solved it, so what are some of the models or examples that can help me, help my children at home? So some of that was some of the information that we were looking for in the resources. Some of the teachers were also talking about differentiating work for the students, as well as interventions. We do have some intervention resources, but I will tell you, in the market, in the area of mathematics, it is not as robust as it is in our language arts counterparts. That is something that has been a real need that we've identified for some time. And so those were the things that guided the evaluation of the resources that we were reviewing.
Okay, I'm sorry, so I did see this. These just seem like very broad comments, you know, which really, you know, if I were to look across this list, you could make an argument for all of the textbooks to have addressed some aspect of those. I'm just wondering, what in Bridges specifically was it that made it stronger? Like, when you looked at it, did it have more outstanding word problems than Singapore? Did it have more, like, examples and fluency testing for basic skills than, you know, something else in here? Like, I don't know, Eureka was developed specifically to address Common Core.
Right, actually, it was, it came down to three products. There's two parts I'm going to answer here. One is that you mentioned Singapore versus the Bridges and what we were looking for, and in problem-solving in particular. There is problem-solving in the Singapore, what they felt is that the problem-solving in the Bridges was more contextual, and the problem-solving seemed to be more word-based in the Singapore product. And in the, I'm sorry, I forgot my second thought there.
No worries, it'll come back.
I'll come back to it. Anyway, it'll come to me, but.
Right, and then I guess, in terms of Eureka and Engage New York.
Thank you, you reminded me. What was interesting is when we came to GoMath, Eureka, and Engage New York, all three of those programs were actually built since the last review process on top of the Common Core standards, whereas the other products that we reviewed were modified or revised to meet the Common Core standards.
Okay. I still have to emphasize my surprise that out of this list, just as I was surprised last go-around when you guys identified Turk and Stepping Stones and comparing them to the others. I understand that the Bridges, when I saw it, I specifically looked to see if they had the algorithms in there, and they do, they fixed that, they actually do include that, which is good, they have practice on the algorithms now. But the order and the presentation that they present things, and the ability to user-friendly sequencing and all that stuff, just, I don't know, like, when I compare it to some of the other programs that have been time-tested and used successfully for so long by many districts, I have to wonder why we went with something that's new and untested when the history of it was so questionable. And I get that, you know, maybe parts of it were good, but nonetheless, if this is going to be used as a home reference material that parents and kids are going to use as kind of a reference guide to learning when kids are having problems in school, or just a supplement to help them enhance and move forward, that whole sequencing and the ability to clearly teach something and then challenge all different levels of kids, like, I don't, I'm still confused as to how Bridges comes out on top of this list, unless, you know, I can understand that more clearly after having looked at them. I mean, I appreciate you going through all of these again, and, you know, and I get that everybody has a different opinion on what works for them when they teach. It's just that some of these have been tried and true, you know, tried and true for so many years, like 15 years they've been tested, and some of them are so new. Do you think it's really a good thing for us to invest in something that's so untested? Or is it better to watch to see if, in fact, a few other districts take this on and have it for a few years? I don't know whether it's the right thing for us to be charging ahead and doing this, given how new this Bridges is, even though you do like it. But a lot of things fall down, like everyday math, people had it for 10 years touting how wonderful it was, and they realized the destructive mechanisms within it, and so many districts dumped it. Do we want that?
Ultimately, the answer is, it's, you're recommending this.
Yes, yes, we have.
And the teachers are recommending.
Yes.
Other comments or questions from board members? Mrs. Maxon Cunelli.
I was wondering if you could, assuming it gets approved, I was wondering if you could tell us a little bit more about the nature of the professional development that will accompany it? I did actually talk with somebody in Madison, and I think they've had it now for about five years, and they really emphasized the importance. I would also say this, they absolutely raved about the program. And so I'm into, but obviously, but they were very specific that it was the nature of their professional development that made it such a success there. So I was wondering what would be planned for the district here?
There are two parts to this. One is, they do offer, part of the package is professional development that comes with it. I've already been in contact with them, getting some more details about that, and also how to tailor it specifically with Fairfield, that we have not landed yet on that, as to what it's going to look like. But that is part of the package, it comes with the package. The other part, I think, and I really have to commend the teachers, because over the past several years, since the adoption of the curriculum and the amount of work that they have done, there has been a tremendous amount of professional development that they've already received in this process. And a lot of the professional development, regardless of the program, really works to address the shift in the Common Core standards, and what the Common Core standards are asking of teachers in the way mathematics is to be implemented, particularly around the mathematic practices, and helping kids to be able to justify their reasoning and understand, not only procedurally, but conceptually, what is happening as they're going through the process. So it is in the works.
And is this something that would be in the first, those first few days in August, that it would, you know, I mean, obviously, you're talking about all of the elementary schools, all staff members, this just is obviously a sizable project, so, or is it that there are few people trained over the summer and they're responsible for bringing it out to everybody? How is that working?
Right, all of the above, we have not landed yet. And it also has to take into consideration the professional development around language arts and the other issues that are going on. So it's a much broader context, it isn't something that is a definitive answer at the moment, but it is something that's in the works.
I just want to add to that, as Mr. Wakeman said, one of our considerations has always been, and particularly after going through this journey with staff, as he said, and as you read in the memo, there were plenty of number of strengths were identified, not just by our staff, but by our parents in the current program. So we are mindful going forward that what we're not doing is, you know, referring back to the social studies curriculum, for example, some of this is an outright, in social studies is going to be an outright replacement, things are going away and things are coming in. The challenge in math is in some ways easier and in some ways more difficult, because we have to meld this resource and use it to fill in primarily where the holes are, where we identified the weaknesses, and the resource, the resources that the board is supporting are going to be ways to start to address some of those concerns. But at the same time, we don't want to, where we've identified existing strengths, we want to make sure that those continue and continue to be built upon. So that's work to be done, because, you know, it's too often sometimes, I'm sure in your own experience, the curriculum or the textbook can become the curriculum, and we have to be very cautious now that that does not happen.
Just to echo that again, and to acknowledge the amount of work and dedication that the teachers have put into this, we don't want to throw the baby out with the bath.
Right.
We really just want to build it, it is time to work to the next level, bring this up to the next level.
Right, and I will say that that part of the memo on page two, with the strengths and the, you know, and the needs, that's what I most wanted to see in the memo. And so, you know, it was good to see that, really, I'm sure gave quite a focus to what was a very large group, you know, this is what we need, and as you say, and this is what we can't lose, so just, you know, my thanks to that extensive list for all of their work, because, you know, I just, I appreciated that aspect of the memo, so thank you for the information included here.
Any other questions?
Go ahead.
Yes.
Marking it.
Mr. Patton, followed by Mr. Llewellyn.
Hi, great job, guys. I'm just thrilled we have a textbook that was agreed on by so many people and long-needed. Two things, you referenced, you know, greater parent, you know, home communication, so to that end, I guess, kind of two parts. Is there an online component of the textbook? Some public comment made reference to, you know, are kids going to be taking these textbooks home versus, you know, can they view them or whatever assignment that they would have, you know, online? And to that end, I know we've talked about certainly in the middle school, you know, levels. you know, the parent guides or online tutorials or any of that for, you know, for, for kids who need, you know, extra assistance and then their parents can figure that out.
There is an online piece for parents to understand, for example, how the mathematics is being taught. There is a resource that goes, goes home to parents that they can use at home. There are also additional resources that are used in the classroom. It is the teacher's discretion whether they would send that home or whether they would use that in the classroom, for example, as additional homework. You know, that, that part would be depending on student need. So there, there are those pieces that are met, which is one of the reasons we had gone with this resource.
We also believe that in addition to the availability of these extra resources that Bridges would provide, there's still work we have to do internally to continue to improve those communications, whether it's around the way the math is taught, even the way, but also work, continue to work on informing parents, improving information to parents about student progress. So that, it's, while it's part of the work, we won't stop with the acquisition.
Okay, so again, will students be, you know, prompted? I know obviously you haven't done your professional development yet. You know, is it anticipated that students, at least, you know, fourth and fifth grade students will be taking the, the actual book home and doing problems or would there be?
No, there is a resource to be taken home.
So like a, or?
It's a, it's a workbook.
A workbook.
That they are able to take home and, you know, teachers can, can, you know, assign particular assignments out of that. And parents will be able to have access to understanding what the work is that students are doing within either the units or how it's being taught.
And is that, before I go through the chair to Dr. Title, but is that a, the workbook or the, the resource guide, is that something that is pretty much common in most of the other books that you were looking at? They all had something like that or not necessarily?
There were a couple of significant shifts that we saw in, since our last review process. To answer, to short, the short answer is yes. But the couple of significant shifts is we saw more of an online presence with resources since our last review from publishers and also a greater reliance on workbook rather than tech, actual physical textbooks, consumable.
Okay.
And this is, this is a K five consumable.
Gotcha, so through the chair to Dr. Title, is that a, since that's a reoccurring thing of kids will be actually working with this resource, is that going to be an ongoing significant expense that we would have to be figuring into the budget?
There will be an ongoing expense. Any, any elementary program has ongoing, you know, almost all of them have the workbook type of consumables. So that will need to get built into, to the budget in future years. But obviously not at this level that you would be at when you do the initial adoption.
Right, and we're not talking hundreds of thousands of dollars every year or anything?
No, we're not.
Okay. Oh, and again, this was brought up in public comment. Is the book available or at least the, the top three, are they available for, for perusal now at the central office?
They're currently, were brought back to one of the schools for, to work with the committee or for the committee to review when, before they gave their final recommendation. That's where it's housed at the moment, but I certainly can bring them back to the central office for anybody who's interested in taking a look at them.
I hope we would have more than one copy.
Oh, no, well, there's a, there's a sample set for each of the grade levels K through five. So I'll bring, I'll bring all of those back to the, to the central office for anybody who's interested.
Unless you obviously need them, certainly before the next meeting and the next, next couple of.
Definitely, I'll work to have them here by Monday.
So I appreciate that, thank you.
Anything else?
That's it.
Mr. Llewellyn.
I've got a couple of questions here for you, if I may, please. What is the cost of the book?
I just asked for the quotes from the company. They arrived about five minutes before I walked in here. So I can get you that information, but actually, I may have it here.
I would, I would, I think we have to look at that. We know that, as Mr. Wickman said, in the five-minute glance, we're within the budget allocation and we won't go beyond the budget allocation. But we have to really look out because as, in these initial quotes, what we have to separate is what are the essentials as opposed to, first of all, we have to verify, because it is a workbook, we have to verify our enrollment against it because that will determine ultimately the final cost. So there's some pieces we can get to and we can get that memo out to the board with a couple of days as we verify those numbers.
So what is that number not to exceed that you're saying? It's in the budget, you won't exceed that. What, what number is in the budget?
It's a five fifty, five fifty.
Five hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Yeah.
And do we have a textbook here or is this just workbooks? I thought I heard you just say workbooks.
These are workbooks.
So there's no textbook?
There is a teacher resource and then there are accompanying student workbooks that are related to that.
Okay, and if you were to estimate the, the percent that goes to the teacher versus the, the workbooks themselves, this is back to Mr. Patton's concept of what's our recurring nut on this one?
Right, I, I am not prepared to answer that right now. I would really have to take a look at the quote that was sent.
Okay, um, just a comment on the process here, if I may. I look at your process timeline and I see that the parents were brought in the day before the approval was done. So they were brought in on April twenty-seventh and twenty-eighth and the decision was made on the twenty-ninth. I look at the outstanding presentation that was made earlier and they brought parents in back in December to comment on books. They clearly laid out what the cost of those books are. I find it interesting that you received the quote for this book five minutes ago. And what is the quote, just out of curiosity, for Eureka?
I don't have a quote from Eureka, I didn't.
Isn't that a free one, though?
The, and there is a purchase, there is a component, workbook component that you can purchase with Eureka. There is an Engage New York, which is a free online source. There are teacher resources that are free online, but the workbooks that the actual students use in the classroom is a, is a product that, that you purchase.
Okay, thank you. And then you, you went and visited, I guess, Madison.
That's correct.
Is Madison the same town that we went to visit for CPM?
Not to my knowledge.
Where did we go to visit?
Is that Mansfield?
Was it Mansfield? Okay, and how many levels do they have at their schools? Because I think that that has something to do with implementation as well and success or not. But how, how did Madison show you that they measured success? If they've had it for five years and it was successful?
There were, we visited K through four classes.
Okay.
And we had representation in each, all of those classes in a debrief session after that. The, we had asked Madison, we had a sit-down with Madison as well, talked about their implementation processes as well as their, as well as the, how they, how the attitude of the staff as well, is qualitative more. And their SBA scores also showed that they had some great success with this particular resource. Again, it's one data point, so you take it for what it is.
Okay, so they didn't provide any quantitative to demonstrate that it's worked?
The one data point that you mentioned.
That's what I'm saying, one, one data point.
The other, the other assessments are, were in-house, a teacher used assessment, so we didn't.
Okay. And then how, how is this going to be blended into the existing curriculum?
There are many components that this resource has. There's one aspect of it that is called number corners and that has, it's, it's an integral part of the Bridges resource. That is important for the implementation of the Bridges resource. Our, the, the resources that we have put together and put in the hands of teachers address all the standards. So that actual component of Bridges becomes a, a resource that teachers can use in a variety of ways for differentiating, for recursive practice. And so that, that piece can be made available for teachers to make some professional judgment decisions around it. So that's just one example. There is also, the, the committee was exceptionally impressed with their intervention aspect of their, their resource. The parent communication piece, they felt was more descriptive than what we are currently providing. So that, that is some elements that we can use. We're looking at, and we, this is part of the professional development that we're going to have to look at is actually the integration and sequencing of the resources, the, the units that they have compared to how we're integrating those. They are addressing, for the most part, the same standards. We just want to make sure because in some of the standards in Fairfield, we have, we have deviated from the Common Core and the, and just to give you an example, for example, the Long Division in fourth grade, we do teach the standard algorithm. That is actually a sixth grade standard in the Common Core standards. So we need to look at our resources compared to Bridges' resources to make sure that we're not, to make sure that we're addressing that to meet Fairfield's standards. So that's the kind of work that we have ahead of us.
And, and I guess my concern here is one that we're, by a workbook, not textbook, we're buying a program, we're going to get professional development. We have no idea what the recurring cost of this is. But one of the comments you made was that we don't want the textbook to become the curriculum. Yeah, I'm not so sure. I look at our scores that were presented, albeit sound bites, not trends, at the last meeting. And in terms of, say, the I Ready scores, we are, you know, absolutely at the bottom of each of the ranges if you plot it out. I mean, you can see how little green there is. You go and you take a look at where we rate versus DRG A and B. And third grade, we're at the bottom, fourth grade, we're just above it. Fifth grade, we jump up, but sixth, seventh, eighth, we drop back down. I actually think that as opposed to, and our next curriculum, formal curriculum review for this comes in implementation of, I believe, 2021. So we are committing to a book for the next several years or a program for the next several years to supplement a program that we have. And I almost wonder if we should be taking a pause as a board and saying, we need to look at trend information, which I've asked for and haven't received. But whether we should be taking a pause and looking at the program in general, saying, is it working? You know, how many hundreds of kids in this town go for tutoring to Mathnasium, to Kumon? And I think the board as, should, should at least be asking for some of this trend information. So we understand if what we're supporting is actually working in the first place or if we really should be stepping back and going for a slightly more rigorous program. I don't know, I, I think I am kind of disappointed in the fact that it's, it's not a tested program with, with good track results. It is reminding me a lot of what happened several years ago at, at the high school level. But I would like to see, Dr. Title, please, the, the historical information that I asked for from I Ready. I'd like to see this board presented with a trend line rather than a, a spot in time. I think that it would be great if we could all please see, have we been making progress? Because when I look at the snapshot sound bites, I don't see progress. They're snapshots, but I also don't see us knocking the cover off the ball. So I would ask that you present to us, please, the analysis that shows, that demonstrates that we've done for the last four or five years is actually working.
Thank you for your comments. This, this item will be on the next regular meeting for action. And of course, then the public will be able to comment as a voting item as well. Moving on to item eight, approval of minutes.
Nope. We got world language.
Oh, that's, you didn't, I'm sorry. I thought you were covering both. No, that's Ms., that's Dr. Boyce who is coming.
Well, this is the same situation as the math. So there's not a presentation on world language, but Dr. Boyce is here to answer any questions about the recommendations. And I believe I see our world language coordinator in the back as well, Eileen Frankel, who can answer questions if the board has them.
Okay, any questions or comments from board members? Any questions or comments from board members? Mrs. Lou McCormick.
So I'm assuming that the books that are being recommended are basically consistent with the middle school book series that was approved prior, is that correct? So it's going to be the same methodology of this authentic learning and the same texts?
And again, for the benefit of the TV audience, if you'd state your name and.
My name is Eileen Frankel. I am the world language coordinator, grade six through twelve.
And the answer to the question was?
Yes.
Yes, thank you.
And I do want to thank you for all the effort that the world language department has done in trying to recreate a better program in, in compliance with kind of the new standard norms that have been set out before you. I do have to say, however, that as mentioned before, I did take the time to go through the books ad nauseam, compare them with old textbooks. Language has not changed, just like math for many years. It is the same, it has the same logic, grammar, spelling, verbal, reading. All those components remain consistent. I'm not convinced that the, a new-fangled way of, of teaching it necessarily is better. I think that for the, this new methodology that seems to be perforating all of our disciplines, which is this higher-level thinking, higher-level thinking must be the primary objective. I get that as an end objective. I, I don't always believe that that is the best way to teach new learners who don't know anything. I believe we need to start simple, logical with a foundation as opposed to just throwing them. We can't do immersion in our district and I'll tell you why. Because we do not speak the foreign language all day long. They get it for what, forty minutes, forty-five minutes, several times a week, if at that. It's not, we can't do immersion properly in this district unless we completely change the way we instruct. And we do something like what Florida did, which was have a world language gym teacher who speaks Spanish and the kids learn commands in Spanish and they get it in there and maybe they get it in music too. But we're not going to do that necessarily yet, we're not there yet. And I am concerned how we are just running to the conceptual before the kids have the foundation on, on the basics. And if you had the basics coming in, well, then this is wonderful. If you had, you know, if you went off on your own to a Kumon equivalent or a Berlitz equivalent for a few years and got the foundation, then coming into this EMC is very good. But we have to assume that a lot of these kids did not do that. So for kids who have some fluency, had some background from their parents or whatever, this might be great. For kids who come in with nothing, I think it's, it's not an ideal way of building a strong foundation and understanding because at this age, because we're not starting in kindergarten or pre-k, we're starting in middle-schoolish. They're thinking logical, they need logic and we are not delivering that in that manner. I'm very concerned with continuing this style. I can't support continuing this, this series of texts, given how it's being used currently in the district. I know it works for some kids, but I just don't think it reaches enough of the kids so that it's going to build a love of the language. It works best in Spanish probably because they had a few years of Spanish going into it. But for languages that they're just starting in, I, I am finding, I think it's going to be, I think it's challenging. I still need to be convinced. I know other people have already convinced themselves, which is fine. But I do want to just make you aware because whereas it might work for some kids, it's, it's definitely not working for others. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Other board members have questions for seeing none? Thank you for sticking around for this. It'll be put on the agenda for action at the next meeting. Turning the page to item eight, approval of minutes. We have four of them. The first one is that the Board of Ed, recommended motion that the Board of Education approve the minutes of the March thirty-first, two thousand and sixteen special meeting. Mrs. Gerber, followed by Ms. Pitco. Any comments or questions, seeing none, all in favor of the minutes, please raise your hand. Mrs. Lou McCormick, are you raising your hand or not?
I'm sorry, for the minutes?
For the minutes, yes. For the special meeting. You are, okay, it's unanimous, thank you very much. The second set is enclosure number eight. Recommended motion, the Board of Education approve the minutes of the April fifth, two thousand and sixteen regular meeting. Have a motion, Mrs. Gerber, Mr. Calabrese. Any comments, hearing none, all in favor, please raise your hand. Okay, Mr. Patton, Mrs. Gerber, Mr. Dwyer, Mr. Calabrese, Ms. Pitco, Mrs. Maxon Cannelly, opposed. Mrs. Lou McCormick, Ms. Carnell, Mr. Llewellyn. Motion passes six to three. Item number C, enclosure number nine. Recommended motion that the Board of Education approve the minutes of the April nineteenth, two thousand and sixteen special meeting. Motion, Mrs. Gerber, seconded, Mrs. Ms. Pitco. Any comments, all in favor, please raise your hand. It is unanimous, thank you very much. And item D, which is enclosure number ten. Recommended motion that the Board of Education approve the minutes of the April twentieth, two thousand and sixteen special meeting. Mrs. Gerber, followed by Mr. Calabrese. Any comments, no raised questions, all in favor, please raise your hand. And it is unanimous, thank you very much. On to superintendent report. As you know, the state finally issued the school profile reports. So Dr. Title, the floor is yours. floor is yours.
So the, the state's doing these in a different way. They're issuing them online, and there's a whole new website that the state has. What we've done with all of these reports is we've got a, a link from our homepage so that anybody who wants to read the school profile and performance reports can do so from the Fairfield Schools website. There's an overwhelming amount of, of these. There's one for the school district, and there's one for every school. So we gave you the link to it. Required under the statute to have it on the agenda as soon as we're made aware that it's made available, so we've done that, and it's here. I should point out that these are for the school year 2013-14. So the data is on, on the aged side, and in some cases, depending on what the data points are, some of the data goes back to 1112 or 1213, depending on what the particular data point is. So there is a lot of information in here. We didn't go through and do the whole paper to print out 18 of these for you, but we did give you the link, so I don't, I never really felt there was a lot of information here that the board doesn't already have or hasn't already seen, but if anybody has any questions about them, or would like more information about them, or you've looked them over and you have some questions you want to send to me, I'm happy to answer them, or if you've got questions now, I'll try to answer them, but wanted to get this on the agenda so we would be in compliance with the statute.
Each school's report is three or four pages long, and that's how much paper you'll be downloading if you go through and get each school plus the district report. So I, I would suggest that those who have an interest, down, download them, read them, and then send in questions. Mrs. Maxon Cannelly.
Just one quick question. Did you, and I don't know if you've had the chance to look these over in great detail or if you've heard from the administrators, did you see any, if you did or hear of, any data points that in any way made you think about things in terms of the update for the district improvement plan?
Now, the, the data is kind of old, so it really is not, in a lot of ways, relevant to what we're, what we're doing. I spent most of my focus, just to focus myself, was on the district one. There's nothing in there that jumped out to me that I think that we didn't already know. One interesting point, and this goes back to 2012-13, because this consistently come up in the budget about special education expenditures, that in the year that they did this, our expenditures are 22.9 percent, the state average is 21.9 percent, so we're pretty much in line, you know, with that. So there's information like that in there, but a lot of the student performance data is, is old, and graduation rates and, and so forth, so I, I don't think this is particularly germane to the district's improvement plan, but there's more recent student performance data that we're going to be getting, obviously, with this round of S-BAC and all the other assessments we're doing, that I think, you know, we have in the back of that plan that I think is much more informative than this. So this is a retrospective, I mean, the 13, this is for the 1314 school year. All right, so I don't know that, I don't know, it's, to me, it's not particularly helpful.
Thank you.
Okay, so please download them, read them, and forward your questions.
I have one, I have one more to do that I just want to flag. We can either do it now, we can do it after the third quarter financial update, but I do want to update the board on our trip to the State Department of Education on racial imbalance.
So why don't we do the third quarter, and then we'll add that to...
Okay, so add that as C for me, so if people have questions on it, they can ask me. So I'll ask Doreen to come up. Believe you got the information on the third quarter report, the detail on the legal expenses and the usual amount that we have, so I'll let Doreen go through this and answer any questions.
It's always nice, at this stage of the game, three-quarters of the way through the year, to say that the projected expenses are expected to be within budget. Obviously, the mild winter gave us some savings with, between snow removal and overtime and utilities, we had some savings there. Transportation was also, we've also realized some savings in fuel, and we've captured our credits and penalties year-to-date to try to get ahead of the game this year. We also had savings in magnet school tuition, so all those things were favorable to us. The Orijes Special Ed, and as I reported in the report, the pension and the 401A. So that, in a nutshell, is how we are looking right now, and of course, we monitor our expenses moving forward very carefully.
You expect to balance the budget?
I expect to balance the budget.
Questions from, have you finished?
Yes.
Not that we expect to. We will balance the budget. We want to make that clear. There is zero chance that we will not balance the budget.
Questions from board members. Mr. Llewellyn.
There you go. Under your section for fixed charges, the 401A, it says that we have town pension costs will be over budget by 78, and the contributions by 15. What were, what did, what did we budget? Because it's not broken out in our budget that I'm aware of. Where, where is, where do I see in our budget book the, the 401A?
It's in the pension line.
Can you break that out for us?
How we budgeted for it? Sure.
Okay. And if we have 78 and 15, how does that relate to the 83 that's on the detailed schedule?
I'm sorry, how does that relate to what?
78 and 15, you're over budget here, 93, and we have an 83 in the schedule on page one of two, line 207, Pension Retirement. Is there something, is there 10,000 in there that's going the other direction?
No, the, the pension payment to the town has been made, but the 401A is just paid as, is paid as incurred. There's another pension item in there, too.
Okay. And what did we pay last year in 401A?
Very little, if anything, because it had just started.
Mr. Llewellyn, remember, these were recently negotiated and only impact new employees, and so it's, it's going to be, in, in the prior year, it'll be a relatively small number.
But weren't they approved in the agreements back in 13 or 14?
But only impacting new employees in that particular bargaining unit, so...
If you could get the breakdown, please, historically for us, and break out the pension for us among the various lines?
Sure.
I, I know questions have been asked about that in the past, and I would kind of like to understand that, especially if we're over by such a huge amount. Did we not budget it at all? Is that why it's over so high? Was it zero in the budget?
The pension piece?
For, for the 401A? Because if we don't have that many people and we're over by $83,000, what's our total...
When we budgeted, you have to remember, when we budgeted this year, we didn't even have a 40, we, we had maybe one bargaining unit that was in it, or, or thinking of it in negotiations.
We have it in all four of them from 2014.
But it is, as people, as new hires, we had no way of projecting how many new hires we were going to have in non-certified positions. It's all a, a function of turnover.
Okay, so how much was in this year's budget that we're comparing against here?
How much is what?
How much was budgeted for, versus this? If we're over by 78 and 15, how much was, what was the budget line?
78 has nothing to do with the 401A.
Okay, so of the 15, what did we budget?
I, I, I believe around 10, 15,000.
Okay, so we're, we're at about 25, and we budget about 10?
Right.
Okay.
And, and if I could, these are numbers that probably were created in December of 14, voted in January of 15, that we're now realizing in spring of 16, so, so probably back in December of 14, there wasn't a lot of historical experience with this.
I, I believe when we budgeted, there was one contract that had the 401A.
The ones we saw were all signed at the same, all, all, I believe, in like March of 14. So if the 15 is related to the 401A, 78 is not. Do we, is there, that was just a, a miss on the 78, or is there a rationale behind it?
The 78, I believe, was the, the Hooker and Holcomb, and in, in working with the town, changed the mortality tables after we had already gone to budget.
Okay, that makes sense. Thank you. And then who is in charge of our 401A? Is that you, or is that the town?
It's ours. It's different, it's separate from the town.
Okay, so you, you, it's, because the town, I believe, said that their HR is, but I know you've said you are.
Mm-hmm.
So it's you for sure?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, just want to check that. Thank you.
They can have it if they'd like.
I'm sure they can. Okay, and then in terms of our, if we look at kind of the bottom line here, where we say we have a grand total of 1.6 of unencumbered?
Mm-hmm.
Is that 1.6, it's 1.6 plus the 3.6, correct? The 3.6 being the special ed reimbursement?
Correct.
Okay, so we have an unencumbered now of around $5 million.
Right, plus there's some magnet school, there's, there's other revenues that...
Haven't washed in yet. Okay, very good, thank you.
Any other questions from board members? Seeing none, on to racial imbalance.
All right, so Mr. Dwyer and I, along with, if you remember, the folks from Malone and McBroom, Mike Zubba and Pat Gallagher, went up to the state and had our 30 minutes of fame before the State Board of Education, and if you recall from seeing the memo that I wrote to them, we basically were saying, it was basically an update of what we had done. It described the long process, the work that had gone in, both by board members, community members, the consultants, on looking at the whole issue of, could we come up with a feasible way to redistrict to solve the problem? The short answer was that the only feasible solution was at least six or seven years away, and so we were basically going back to the state board to update them and say that we would need some time to come up with a shorter-term solution than that. And so we did that. They were amenable to giving us more time to work on a short-term solution, but non-amenable for a whole year's worth of time to come up with such a solution. So we haven't gotten the official letter back, although it was a very cordial, professional conversation. There weren't a lot of, I don't know, negative sentiment there afterwards. The folks that talked to us from the state were happy with where it went. So they're, they're looking for some kind of amendment to the plan to beef up our existing structures by December of this year. And the, the fact of the matter is, that's reasonably doable to look at our existing program that we use and see if there's some way we can enhance that to make it work more effectively, to get us under the, under the number, to forestall, you know, a larger solution down the road. Any such change in what we're doing needs to be approved by the board, and it really needs to be done sometime in the fall or anyways, because it might have budget impacts. It also could impact, you know, families who are enrolling in our pre-K, if that's going to change in any way. That has to be known before we start recruiting or not recruiting for pre-K students, and so that usually happens in, in January. So the timing will, will work, and, and I will work with whoever sits in this chair, and I will work up something to get somebody up to speed on this so they can bring it forward to you in the fall for your consideration. So, I don't know, that's my report on it. Phil, you want to give your perspective?
We'll be, yes, it was, we were received well. I think they appreciate that we have been proactive this past year in, in looking at various options. I think they appreciated that we hired the consultant to take a serious look at what would be a long-term solution to this. This will be on the October board discussion of what the budget should look like from their perspective, and the November discussion, which is when we talk about what program initiatives we may be putting into the budget, and certainly this would be in that category, so that we would then be able to take action on that, so that we would meet the December target that we expect their letter to be coming to us shortly, that would say, we'd like to see you in December. We originally had suggested the following spring, and they were anxious that, that we attend to it a little bit quicker than that. So that's the update.
Okay, that's it. I'm done.
Committee and liaison reports. Any liaison or committee reports that people wish to state? Mrs. Maxon Cannelly.
Thank you. I actually have a little something to read. And for the board, and just as information to the general community, I hope this is getting out to all of the PTAs. This is regarding PTA Council, that it's actually a very exciting moment in June, which is the annual awards for PTA Council. There is the Deanna O'Kierney, and as well as the Alice B. McGrath Friend of Education Awards, which are given to hard-working volunteers in recognition of their passion and their remarkable contributions to the Fairfield Public Schools. In addition, on the same night, there are the Brian Fagan Awards, which are given to qualified teachers in our district currently enroll in graduate programs for educational administration. This awards day, the full board would, you'd, we'd be thrilled to have you all there, I'll certainly be there, which is on Wednesday, June 1st, at 7:00 PM at Tomlinson Middle School. And don't worry, I'll be reminding you about this again on May 17th, and so that, to come and, and recognize these volunteers and recognize these teachers, but also if, for anyone to give a thought out to some great people to nominate. The paper, the nominations are due by Friday, May 13th. Anyone is welcome to contact me, and I can put them in the right direction for that information. You could also see Fairfield P T A C, which is for ptacouncil.org, to get those forms and nominations. And just, again, a wonderful opportunity. This is a community full of very committed volunteers, and while they don't do it for the sake of earning the recognition, that doesn't mean it isn't always well-deserved, well-warranted, and a nice opportunity. So I'm hoping other board members would be available that night to attend, and again, it's a great night.
Thank you. Mrs. Gerber.
Well, I do know that something went out on Peachjar about it. I just got it today, I think, so. And then the other thing I just want to say with the Ludlow Project, they went before the Board of Finance today, tonight, at Osborne Hill, to, with the additional funding request that's already been passed by the Board of Selectmen. They did make their presentation, but the Board of Finance has postponed their vote until Tuesday, May 17th, which unfortunately then means that they will not make the committee meetings for RTM in May, which means that the earliest that the RTM can hear the request is June. So it's unfortunate, it just kind of pushes, pushes things off a little bit and could result in additional costs. I hope not, but you never know.
Any other liaison reports? The Holland Hill Building Committee continues to meet and continue to move the project along at a rapid pace. Tonight, they had interviews for the CM, and so it's on schedule. No other committee liaison reports? Open board comment? Seeing none? I'm sorry, Mrs. Lou McCormick.
I hope this is not alone, but I do want to say that I feel like the open forums that HYA conducted for us have gone well, and I've gotten good feedback that they've conducted them in a very even manner. So, you know, I think in general, people are, are happy with this election.
And another comment that you might have noticed in the newspaper, that the citizen participation in the online survey has been more than they truly expected, so I think we do have good participation. Mrs. Gerber.
Yeah, well, unfortunately, he's left again, so we can't acknowledge him in person. He keeps running out. But we did, some of us here at the table did go to the Connecticut PTA Dinner the other night, and where Greg Hatzis was honored as the High School Principal of the Year. We also had some other notable wins or mentions. Ward's PTA won the increased membership, I think, they, yeah. And Mill Hill was recognized for their school of distinction, I think, is that the, it's unfortunate nobody was there for Mill Hill, but... unfortunate, nobody was there from Mill Hill, but, oh, well, but somebody from Ludlow, actually, who was a Mill Hill alumni, picked up the award instead. And then there was also, there's one scholarship that's given statewide to a student who is planning on pursuing education, and that student was from Ward. Ann Cullen, correct? Anna Cullen. And in nice kind of synchronicity, she was at Woods when Greg Hatzis was there. So he said in his speech that she will have a job waiting for her in four years when she graduates from college. So, but it was a wonderful night, and I would highly recommend going to those in the future. It's just great to see the whole state together, celebrating all the accomplishments.
Yes. Mrs. Lefort, you should make a note of that, that there's an employee that's waiting to be hired four years from now. There are no further comments adjournment at this regular meeting of the Board of Education adjourned. Mrs. Gerber, Mr. Calabrese, all in favor? Please raise your hand. We're adjourned.